All right. This meeting will come to order. Goodness, I'm not used to that thing. We will have the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance.
Scouts salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome to Cambridge Town Meeting. And first of all, is there anyone here who is their first town meeting? Anybody at first town meeting? Way up there. Welcome. All right. We're going to start with the reading of the warning. There's a question already? All right. Annual meeting of the Town of Cambridge, Vermont, March 5th, 2024. The legal orders of the Town of Cambridge are hereby warned and notified to meet in town meeting at the Cambridge Memorial Gymnasium in Jeffersonville within said town on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. to transact the following business from the floor. And at this point, rather than reading the rest of the warning, I would entertain a motion to suspend the reading of the rest of the warning as there are reports appear and it's all printed, and move on to Article One. Is there some emotion? So move the second? Okay. Is there any opposition? There being then, I'll just move it right on to the election. Article One, to elect a moderator for the town meeting for the year ensuing, and nominations would be in order.
Jerry?
Yes.
Hello, my name's Jeff Coslett, and I would like to nominate Joel Page for town moderator.
Okay. Joel Page's name has been placed in nomination. Any other nominations? No brave souls? Yes.
I move that the nomination be closed and for the draft goes out for Joel.
Okay. You can make the motion, or you just can use an unanimous decision and just move the question as there is no other candidates. If there's no other objection, let's just move to the voting for the moderator then. I see none. Then all in favor of Joel Page for moderator for the Town of Cambridge? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Joel seems to have it. In fact, he does have it. Congratulations. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you all very much for electing me as the first new moderator in Cambridge in 43 I've got some really big shoes to fill. How about a big round of applause for Jerry Cole and his 43 years of service? Jerry is not off the hook yet. To help me with this transition, I am appointing Jerry as parliamentarian. He will be sitting near me, available to advise me about application of Robert's Rules. It is an honor and a privilege to serve as the moderator for the Town of Cambridge. My job is to remain impartial and to facilitate your will. I will try to be thorough and thoughtful, patient and pleasant. There's no way I can duplicate Jerry's dry sense of humor, at least not at this first meeting, but eventually I may loosen up. I hope you will be patient with me as I work through this day's business. I think if we work together, I'm sure that we can get through this just fine, even if I have a few stumbles along the way. And remember what Jerry often says, "We came in here as neighbors and will leave here as neighbors." Let's be kind to each other. So we're still not done with Jerry. At this time, Jeff Coslett has a couple of recognitions of Jerry that he would like to take care of. So Jeff?
Come on up, Jerry.
Oh, gosh.
So in commemoration for 43 years of dedicated service as the town moderator for Cambridge, we would like to present this plaque to Jerry. The Town of Cambridge, with great respect and gratitude, acknowledges Jerome.
My mother used to. Yes, yes.
Jerry Cole, for his 43 years of outstanding service as he retires from the role of moderator, March 5th, 2024.
Thank you all, but you know, plaques are nice, but you know, they go like in a trophy case out there, and eventually they get dusted, and they get whatever, and then they get forgotten. But your heartfelt thanks for my work is what means the most to me. A lot of you have come up and said that, that you really enjoyed me as the moderator. And that's what I will treasure more than, treasure than this. Thank you.
So we also have dedicated the podium to Jerry's service. So this says, "This podium is dedicated to Jerry Cole for his 43 years of service as town moderator, March 5th, 2024."
Bonnie Hitchcock came with the first copy of the town report, and when I saw that, I had to pinch myself to make sure I wasn't dead. Reports of my demise are extremely exaggerated, but then I remembered that Jean Porter had her picture on there, and she's still much, very much alive, so I figured I'm. Are we done now?
Done with you.
For the time being. At this time, I would move to suspend the agenda so that we can hear from our state representatives, Senator Rich Westman and Representative Lucy Boyden.
So if there's no objection, then by unanimous consent, we can suspend the rules and hear from Rich Westman and Lucy Boyden. Come on up, Lucy, too.
Good morning. I'm Lucy Boyden. I represent Cambridge and Waterville at the Vermont House of Representatives. I sit on the Committee of Government Operations and Military Affairs, and I'm also an active member of the Rural Caucus. Senator Rich Westman and I have put together a town meeting report, and it's available at the entrance. Town meeting is a great opportunity to reflect as it marks the halfway point of the legislative session. Each year, we head into the session with priorities that meet the needs of our communities. Some of the priorities for 2024 include maintaining a responsible, balanced state budget, supporting flood recovery, creating affordable housing and modernizing zoning laws in Act 250, as well as supporting business growth and capacity within our rural communities to access resources. Many of these challenges cannot be solved in a single session, and as we wrap up the FY24 budget adjustment and look towards FY25 budget process, it's important to reflect on these priorities and come to terms with what is realistic. We're facing interconnected cost pressures mainly shaped by three realities: a decrease in federal funds, assisting communities who felt the effects of flooding, and underfunded state agencies and organizations in need of critical support. As I mentioned, I sit on the House Committee of Government Operations and Military Affairs, where we focus on developing policy around all levels of government, elections, public safety, military affairs, liquor, lottery, cannabis, and more. Since we cover a wide range of jurisdiction, there's been many opportunities for committee members to take the lead on further developing bills and collaborating with stakeholders. This session I've taken on H. 622 relating to emergency medical services. It looks to stabilize our system and address regional coordination and workforce development. I've also taken on H. 702 relating to government accountability, which looks to establish a joint legislative government oversight and accountability committee to perform measured checkbacks on enacted legislation and issues of significant public concern. It's an honor to serve Cambridge and Waterville. Whether you have a question, policy improvement idea, vote concern, or even a message of gratitude, it's important that we hear from you. By working together, we can develop solutions and improve all corners of Vermont. Thank you.
So I'm Rich Westman, and I represent the county in the legislature. My morning committee is agriculture. My afternoon committee is appropriations. And I thought what I do this year in talking to town meeting is talk about a little bit about where we are from a high level. This is probably going to be, in my many years in the legislature, one of the three hardest years to put together a budget and deal with the financing of the state that I have ever seen. In 1991, Dick Snelling was governor, and we had to let go 400 state, 450 state employees. We put tears on the income tax. We did a thing called JToc that moved money from the Transportation Fund to balance a budget. That was probably the hardest single budget that I've ever seen. Second to that was probably after the Great Recession around, during the Obama years in 2009 and 10. But this year is probably going to be even harder than that for us, in that we're just coming off from COVID. During COVID, the federal government transferred almost $2 billion, or a little over $2 billion to the state, and people became accustomed to that. Our own state revenues are flat at best. We have 17,000 less people working in Vermont than we did in 2010, and our demographics are catching up with us. And when you figure the 17,000, where that really hits you is those are 17,000 less people paying income taxes. We had somewhere around 370,000 to 380,000 taxpayers now. We had 17,000 more than that in 2010. And with the aging population we've got, and I'll use in my morning committee in agriculture, it's surprising, the largest single group, a growing percentage of the pie for people that own agricultural land in the state is people over 80. So every place you go, we have an aging population that, quite frankly, needs money in a human services budget, nursing homes, home health, and those that all cost money, and we've got less workers to do that. That's the backdrop of where we are. And what COVID did in the monies that we had coming in from COVID have created an expectation that there's lots of money around. So this is the correction time. So it's, I hate to sound as a downer, but the reality of where we are is beginning to catch us right now, and the adjustments that are going to have to be made will be difficult. And I think between now and May could be one of the most difficult times that I've served in the legislature over the last 40 years. And I think Lucy and I would be open to questions at any point now.
Give us the bad news now.
I said to Joan this morning, I said, you know, I hate to be a downer and go in and, what can I say positive? It's really hard when you sit on a committee, and my appropriations committee, we do these things where we have people come and testify. They get three minutes, three minutes, three minutes. And we just had 90 people in with over $900 million in requests. And, you know, and they're all good things, and they're all things we want to do, but and the difficulty around that. Our spending level right now, Vermont's revenues a year ago were $150 million more than we're able to find for revenues now, partly because of the federal money. So our available revenues are shrinking, and the demand is there.
Somebody must have a question. Go ahead.
Jan, could you go to a microphone, please?
Everything's taller than I am. I read a couple weeks ago that the legislature was considering a bill that would tax high earners. I forget what the threshold was, but it was really up there. I don't know anybody who makes that much. Has that bill gone anywhere? I haven't heard anything about it since that one mention.
Yes, so there's two House bills in Ways and Means. I can't think of the number off the top of my head, but they're, they start with an eight. And they look to tax some of the wealthiest Vermonters in the state. I can't think of what the bracket is at the moment, but like the wealthy, wealthy. They're currently still in Ways and Means. I don't believe there has been any movement at the moment, and we are nearing crossover when House bills need to get over to the Senate and Senate bills need to come over to the House. So next Friday will be the end of crossover for policy bills, and the Friday after that will be the end of crossover for money bills. So depending on its development, there's not much development on it, so there would be quite a bit of cram time if they did want to move it to the Senate in two weeks, because we're not in session this week.
Go ahead, Larry.
Larry, behind you. Behind you, Larry. This is the first time in 12 years I've got to speak from the floor. So, Rich, Lucy, it looks like our taxes this year combined. Now, the town's budget went up 2%? Jeff?
1.75%.
Okay, 2%. The state's proposing 20% Ed. Okay, so that's a 12.5%.
Whoa. The state's not proposing that. It's based upon budgets that are voted on in communities, and what you saw for an estimate in November was the estimate of what they thought the budget increases would be, and all of the other factors that go into the Ed fund, and that was an estimate. So no one's sure until after, pretty much today, what those increases might look like.
So let me finish my question. So if it is 20%, that's going to be a 12.5% property tax increase for every property owner here in this town, whatever you guys come up with. You can pass it down to the school boards, but we know that the mandates, the people that got COVID money and then kept spending even though the COVID money's gone. I hear that the medical, the teachers' medical went up $50 million was one of the main driving forces, but $50 million out of $2 billion, I think that's, those are round numbers. When do we, when do we start cutting? I mean, we're, yes, there's tremendous amount of need for people in the state, but the legislature passes it down to the school boards. The school boards are doing the best they can. We're going to talk about them this afternoon. But my fear is, if there's another increase next year, we'd be talking, and you know, this is getting to the point where people, young people in this town and the elderly aren't going to be able to afford their property taxes, and then there's going to be a revolt. And this is a comment, but I would encourage you to be more, you know, Rich has been very conservative as far as fiscally. He's, you know, he's done well. This is not a sustainable process, and I don't, I don't know what your answer is. Do you revamp the Ed funding? Because now you get more money if you're for equity, if you're not, if you don't speak English, whatever. Where does this end, Rich, Lucy? I mean, we can't keep this up.
I think it's the same thing that at the state level incorporated in a lot of school budgets across the state was the ARPA money and the federal money that came in. During COVID, there were many mental health needs that schools needed, and they've incorporated that in. That is a piece of the increase. Healthcare across the state did go up 16%. I think when you look at the Cambridge budget, and I went last night, and I may be wrong a little, the budget overspending from last year is up about 6%. But because the COVID money went away, you have to raise more money than just that. That 6% represents the contracts for teachers and represents the incorporation of healthcare costs in this district. So we're in a time where that transition from a COVID world, where we had lots of federal money, both at the federal and the state level, is coming and hitting all of us quite hard within our budgets. I ultimately would say to you, I think the complications of the education funding formula we have, and the way it's all put together, really after 25 years or longer, it's time that we revamp the education funding formula and move away from the system the way it is right now. But we don't seem to be able to get off the dime to do that.
To talk about our area specifically, with our Lemoine North District, to reduce the combined district tax rate to zero growth, it would take a reduction of close to over $1 million. And then to reduce the after CLA rate changes to zero, it would take an excess of over $6 million. So Lemoine North has not only benefited from Act 127 and increased people rates, but more than three-fourths of the budget is student-facing and student-driven. So like Rich said, we're facing times where there's a decrease in federal funding, and we're really looking at how we can truly support our students in continuation. You know, at the state level, we do need to look at education spending and finance and how we can better support across the whole state rather than specifically supporting
I would say, too, a piece of the real problem for a town like ours is the common level of appraisal and the increase in property values here. Property values grew here faster than the rest of the state, so it's coming back to hit us. And that's an area I really think is unfortunate and really ought to be looked at within the formula.
So your question or your comment about having trouble getting off the dime on this, I'm curious if any research has been done as to how other states fund education versus Vermont's formula, and if there's any interest in formulas that seem to be working better elsewhere in the country?
I think people look at that all the time. I think it will be an interesting day across the state to see what happens with school budgets. There are districts right next to us. Mount Mansfield Union High School put off their budget vote within Jericho, Underhill, and that district. And part of the reason they put off the district is, and the legislature just changed this, on the income sensitivity side, they capped your increase for those people that were income sensitized, and here, nearly 70% of everybody is income sensitized, and said, "Your increase in your property taxes can't go over 5%." Mount Mansfield took advantage of that, or thought they were going to, and they increased their budget by 9.98%, and they tucked $5.6 million in their budget to put towards school The legislature two weeks ago lifted that cap and said you, that they could charge more than that. And as soon as the legislature did that, Mount Mansfield decided they weren't going to have their budget vote today, and they're taking that $5.6 million out. So I don't know how many districts across the state will do things like that. Here in this district, we've been a lot better at keeping up our schools and not letting our construction costs fall behind like they did at Mount Mansfield. So, you know, a lot will depend on what happens today. If we're looking at double-digit increases across the state in property taxes, it will put a lot of pressure on people in the legislature to finally get off the dime and change the formula.
The question was, if you looked at others?
People look at that all the time.
So are there leading, leading portals, leading suggestions?
Every state in the country struggles with that. The two biggest spending items in every state budget across the country are school spending and Medicaid spending. And our Joint Fiscal Office is pulling stuff out all the time, and there are people looking. It's having the political will to move for a change. It's having the political will to move for a change.
You've mentioned now a couple of times healthcare costs, rising healthcare costs. When I was working for Lemoyle, Lemoyle North Supervisor Unit a number of years ago, healthcare costs for, for staff and teachers were increasing by 15 to 16%. That was a long time ago. They're still increasing by that amount. I want to ask you a different question, or a related question. It has to do with a current Senate bill, 211, which seeks to defang, I guess I could say, the Green Mountain Care Board. The Green Mountain Care Board is working for all of us to control costs, healthcare costs, by, by monitoring hospital rates and executive compensation and so forth. I'd like to know where you stand, Rich, on S-211.
I haven't seen the details of 211, and what I would tell you is the Green Mountain Care Board, in my estimation, was developed during the time when they thought we were going to have single-payer healthcare. And having sat on a hospital board, I sat on the Copley Board two different times for over 16 years of my life. The only part of healthcare that the Green Mountain Care Board covers is hospital budgets. Doesn't cover primary care, doesn't cover our FQHC Board here, Lemoyle Health Partners, which now has taken over the Cambridge Health Center, does, has very little to do with the movement towards nursing home care, has nothing to do with what home health costs are, or any. So, there is a lot of frustration, particularly within the hospital business, that hospitals over the last six or seven years have been, every year said, "You get a 3% cap on your budget, 3% cap," with no digging down into the budget to see what the rates are. And right now, with 13 hospitals in the state, we have nine of 13 hospitals that are all in deficit. And so, the pressure to change the Green Mountain Care Board and change the direction in that, with nine hospitals that are in financial trouble and coming on the heels of Springfield almost going bankrupt, there is a lot of movement within the Health and Welfare Committee about changing the focus and changing what's going on. I don't know the details of the bill yet, but I'm very interested to see about that. The regulatory process around that can't be just with hospitals, and we can't drive our community hospitals into the ground.
I think there was one more, and, did you have one?
Sure. One quick point. Hi, I'm David Kegg. I live here in Jeff, Cambridge, whatever. One quick point and one question. The point is, I'm proud to be a Vermonter with the amount that we spend on education when the federal government is currently, I don't know, I think we're pretty severely below what UNESCO recommends for federal contribution to education, so it's really falling on the state's shoulders, and I think that the impetus needs to maybe shift in that respect. I'm curious whether anything is being done, we're at, you said 17,000 fewer taxpayers or job holders.
Job holders.
Job holders in the state of Vermont, and yet, real estate is a tremendous problem. Is there anything being done to increase taxes or look at the tax rates for second homeowners?
I, as we're talking about putting a surtax on the income tax for wealthy Vermonters, as we're looking at cloud taxes, as you're looking at the property tax structure and how it's funded, I personally think on the revenue side for the formula, that we ought to look at that. The second home industry here is a lot healthier than businesses on our main street. If I look at most of the communities around, it's hard to keep a mom-and-pop store alive. The non-residential rate is exactly the same for second homeowners as it is for commercial businesses on, I think that's one of the things in a, in an education funding formula that ought to be looked at. And as I said to you, if there's trouble passing budgets this year, we may finally get to a place where we take a look at the formula and say, "What are the inequities in the formula?"
Thank you. This isn't a question, it's more of a statement to Rich and Lucy. When looking at second home taxes in the state, please be aware that there are two vastly different levels of second homeowners. There are the mega-mansion second homes, I won't mention the towns where they are, but you all know. And then there are those of us who, in the long-honored Vermont tradition, have camps. Please, do not lump us both together. We are very, very different animals. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's one of the more complicated matters of looking at this issue, is how do you divvy up what a property is based off of size, but also the amount of time that somebody spends there. You could say, "You're only allowed to be here X amount of days, and if you're here one day less, you slide under and are not grouped into that tax group." So, it's, it's complicated, but it's absolutely something we should be looking at, in my opinion.
All set? Rich?
Thank you. We're both off to Waterville.
They're on a deadline. I'm sorry, we're going to have to cut it off here. Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Lucy. All right, so before we get to Article 2, there are a number of preliminary matters that we need to address. First of all, regarding voting, you need to have checked in to vote. You should have received numbered ballots that look like this. You'll need those when it comes time for ballot votes. You should have received a handout that says "Welcome to Town Meeting" that looks like this, explaining basic town meeting procedures. Did anybody here who's a registered voter not check in? The check-in is over in the corner on the left. So, before, probably now is a good time to, there's no line, to make sure that you check in. Can't vote till you've checked in. Now, with respect to the Welcome to Town Meeting form, there is an evaluation form on the bottom, and the town officers would appreciate feedback, so if you care to take a minute to fill in that evaluation form, it would be appreciated. Now, for those of you who are not registered Cambridge voters, would you please stand up? All right, so, those who are not registered, thank you, and we're glad that you're here with us. Just a reminder that you cannot vote, and unless your name is on a, both of you that I saw standing up, your names will be on a list of people who are, will be approved to speak, outer towners that can speak. If you're not a registered voter, you can't vote, and you can't speak without the group's So, regarding non-residents speaking during the meeting, there is a list of non-residents who are involved in town government and who may need to speak regarding certain articles. It is customary to suspend the rules and approve in advance having these folks speak by unanimous consent. Here are their names and titles. Alan Carey, Cambridge Fire Department. Jonathan Delabrie, Town Administrator. Jessica Warren, Assistant Clerk and Treasurer. Eric Bouzanne, Highway Manager. Sarah Lurie, Conservation Commission and Trails Committee. Liam Carney, Trails Committee and Crush Preserve Committee. Keith Gross, Town Office Renovation and Trails Committee. And Martha Manning, Cambridge Rescue Squad Board of Directors. Unless there is an objection, we will suspend the rules and allow these individuals to speak if the circumstances come up where they wish to speak. This meeting is being recorded and streamed, I believe, therefore, we all need to use microphones, otherwise what is said will not be available on the recording, and nobody will hear, or many won't hear what you say. When you want to speak to the group, raise your hand and wait to be recognized by me, the moderator. Then, go to a microphone or wait for a microphone to be brought to you. State your full name, and then proceed. I'd like to say thank you to the members of the Cambridge Tech Ambassador, 5th and 6th graders who are here and who are handling microphone duties. I believe there are two floating mics out there being handled by the tech ambassadors. As most of you are aware, Robert's Rules of Orders will govern the procedures of this meeting. The handout that you received explains the basics of Robert's Rules. In addition to what is in the handout, there are some other considerations that I need to bring to your attention. These are mostly related to Robert's Rules as well. After you've spoken once on a particular article, you will not be recognized a second time during discussion on that article or amendment until all other voters who wish to speak on the issue for the first time are given an opportunity to do so. Also, all motions, remarks, and discussion must be addressed to me, the moderator, not to other individuals in the group. I will do my best to recognize you in the order that you have raised your hands. You must be recognized to speak, even to move the previous question or call the question. After being recognized, please stand up, wait for the microphone, give your name, and speak in a loud voice so that your comments may be heard by everybody and picked up by the recording. Your speeches must be confined to the merits of the question. I will not allow you to engage in personal attacks on a member of the body or on their My role as the moderator is to help you accomplish the business of the day. Please raise your hand and ask a question if you don't understand what is happening. Do the same if you think what is happening is wrong for some reason. And also, get my attention if you want to do something, but you don't know how to proceed, and I'll try to help you find the right way to work through the rules so that you can accomplish what it is that you want to accomplish. Finally, regarding Robert's Rules, please tell me if you feel that I am ruling improperly. You can challenge the moderator. It's the will of the group and not the will of the moderator that controls this meeting. All right, bear with me, please, just a little longer regarding these preliminaries. Robert's Rules gives each speaker 10 minutes, but that rule can be modified. It's customary in many towns to shorten that time. I would suggest a five-minute time limit. If you can't make your point in five minutes, you probably won't get your point across. If someone needs a little more time, that can usually be accomplished by unanimous consent. So, unless there is an objection, we will suspend the rules and modify the time limit to five minutes. Reports of officers, however, will be exempt from the five-minute rule because they need to present complicated information like the budget. Robert's Rules also provides that paper ballots can be requested by seven voters, but that rule can be modified. It is customary to modify the number to 25 voters. Unless there is an objection, we will suspend the rules and modify the number of voters needed to request a paper ballot to 25 voters. During breaks, we usually have what I call public service announcements, where a representative of a committee or a local organization speaks briefly about their activities. If you would like to speak during a break on behalf of an organization, let me know by adding your name to the list that is on the edge of the stage. Also, up on the stage here are copies of the Town Report. If you don't have a copy of the Town Report with you and would like a copy, you can grab one right up front here. The Cambridge School District meeting will start after the end of Town Meeting. We will recess for lunch at around noon. Lunch has been prepared by the school's junior iron chefs, and proceeds from the lunch will go to that program. A $10 donation is suggested. We ask that you go down the front stairs, basically going out the back of the gym, rather than using the stairs that are up here in the front of the gym. So, go out the back to go to lunch, don't go down these stairs. The Cambridge 6th grade class, I believe, has a food table in the lobby, and you can visit that at any time. Proceeds from those food sales go to the 6th grade class trip. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the people on the stage. On my right, your left, starting at the far end, basically, these are all Select Board members here. Starting on the far end is Jeff Coslet, Cody Marsh, Peter Ingelstadt, Courtney Lights, and Charlie Giet. And then, to my left, your right, on the far end, we have Dana Warren, who's the Town Clerk and Treasurer, Donna Warren, sorry. Jonathan Delabrie, and your favorite former moderator, Jerry Cole, now parliamentarian. All right, now it's time for us to move on to Article 2. Article 2, just a moment. Article 2 reads, "To hear the reports of the town officers." This article gives you an opportunity to hear the reports of town officers, request explanations about past actions, and to ask them questions about their written reports. The Select Board's written report is located on page 9 of the Town Report. The Auditor's written report is on page 11. The Highway Department written report is on page 11. And the Listers' written report is on page 12 of the Town Report. Note that we cannot get into worn business of the day under this article. And note also that this is not an article that we vote on. Jeff Coslet is the Chair of the Cambridge Select Board. Jeff, will you be presenting the Select Board report?
I will.
All right, okay, you have the floor.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Joel. Almost said Jerry. So in your town report, there is a written Select Board Report that you can all read. Hopefully, there's no need to go through those step by step. What I wanted to do this morning was really focus on one topic that is, we think, going to become more and more a priority for the town to be considering and working to resolve over the coming years. So every year, the Select Board develops a list of priorities, and in 2023, that was no different. And quite honestly, the plan was working pretty well up until July 11th. Then things changed radically. That is, of course, when we had the significant flooding event that occurred in July. One of the outcomes of that, oh, by the way, before I go beyond this, before I forget, also in your town report, along with the dedications, you'll find the proclamation of gratitude that the Select Board approved that recognized the great works and efforts of those in the community in response to the flooding and the recovery efforts. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that. With the flooding event, one aspect that has been a need but is becoming more and more of an apparent need is for housing and particularly affordable housing in the town of Cambridge. One of the very unfortunate outcomes of the flooding has been that properties that have been in flood-prone areas were damaged once again. And for several of these properties, it's the multiples of times that they have had damage. This, of course, in July was more significant than many previous events. As a result of the flooding, there has been a buyout program, actually, two primary programs, one through the federal government through FEMA, and then another state program through Vermont Emergency Management, in which individuals who own property that has been flooded can request a buyout, where their property would be acquired by the town through resources that would be provided through state funding or through federal funding. Those properties would then be demolished. All improvements would be removed, and the land would need to be retained forever, in perpetuity, as open ground. No new structures could ever be built there. That is an impact that is something we're going to need to recognize. Currently, we have five distinct property owners representing seven property buildings and a total of 29 bedrooms, if you count by the Lister card, that have applied for these buyouts. One so far has been approved. Four others are pending based on available funding. And there has been additional interest from other residents to have their properties bought out because they too were affected by the flooding. What this means is we already have a very limited inventory of housing available in the town of Cambridge. By a quick Zillow search, you would find that currently there are three single-family residents that are on the market that, you know, are being listed publicly. There are certainly some houses that are being sold through private transactions. But the point is, there's a very limited inventory even before we get to these buyouts. And in addition, with the increase in the population of Cambridge, the most recent census data was around 3,800 residents in Cambridge. That was in 2020, before the pandemic, and the population growth pressures have only added to that. So we have a number of challenges. We have some decreasing inventory, or at least static inventory, while we have increasing need. What all of this comes down to is we have, as a town, some significant questions that we are going to need to consider as we start to move forward. When you look at where possible growth in housing could occur, the current Cambridge Town Plan calls for growth to be concentrated as much as possible in the village cores. Unfortunately, if you look at the village cores at Jeffersonville or Cambridge Village, there is very little, if any, available land that is not already in a flood-prone area. So growing our housing in those areas is going to be very problematic. So there's a number of questions that I am posing today, none of which we really have answers to, but are things that we are going to have to grapple as a community. This isn't just a Select Board issue, this is a community issue. These are some of the challenges. So what is the vision for growth in Cambridge? We have a town plan that currently exists. It was developed and approved in 2018. It is mandated to be updated every eight years, so it would need to be updated by 2026. That work is commencing this year. We need collectively to be thinking, where is housing going to occur in the town of Cambridge? Couple of things. Are we going to be looking at concentrated housing, like planned unit developments, you know, something where you would have a lot of density in a very small area? Or is it going to be the more traditional approach that Cambridge and many other rural towns have of dispersed development, houses on one-, two-, three-acre or larger lots? How many units per year? What type of acceleration of growth are we comfortable with? Because along with that growth comes the impact on the aesthetics, on the quality of life, on services, you know, those type of questions. Are we looking, you know, over the next five years, over the next 10 years? These are things, again, that we are going to need to consider. What would it look like if, currently, the town does not have zoning? And zoning has been an issue that has come up from time to time. To date, it has not been something that has been approved by the town. Is zoning something that is going to be considered in the future? The question would be, what problem would zoning be attempting to resolve? So again, that is a question that we're going to need to consider as we go down this path. Some things that are outside of our control, Act 250. Currently, there is legislation, or at least discussion in the state legislature, on amending Act 250. Originally, it was an effort to lessen the criteria of the Act 250 approval process for development. However, the current legislation could actually increase the complexity and the time involved in going through that type of a development process. One proposal, nothing finalized yet, is a statewide environmental review board that these types of qualifying developments would need to go through. What type of timeframe would that take? What additional expense would that incur? These are things that our state legislators are going to be grappling with but could have significant impacts on the town of Cambridge. And lastly, the town does have subdivision regulations, and these are revised from time to time. Right now, the Cambridge Planning Commission is working on those revisions. They're going to be working with the Development Review Board collaboratively to come up with changes based on the previous experience, current experience, of how those regulations are working. What will those new regulations be like? Will they make it more difficult, more costly, more efficient? You know, what is it going to look like? These are questions, again, that we don't have answers to yet but are working on. So I just want to summarize that there's many challenges that the town faces. Some are good challenges. Some are things that we deal with are the block and tackling of the daily existence of running a town. But there are some overarching issues, and housing does seem to be one of those that, again, as a community, we are going to need to come together and set a vision for how we plan for that going forward. So those are the only prepared comments that I have, although I do have one other recognition. Today is the last day of five years of service for Courtney Lights as a Select Board member. I've had the pleasure of working with Courtney for the last three years, and we do have a token of appreciation for her service. Sorry, Joel. So the town of Cambridge wishes to extend thanks and appreciation to Courtney L. Lights for her five years of dedicated service on the Cambridge Select Board, March 2019 to
Thank you, everyone. It's been a real honor to serve here in town, and I've appreciated my five years and have really learned a lot. And I'm looking forward to see where the town goes in the future.
Do any of you have questions or comments for the Select Board regarding their report? Yes, sir, if you could get a mic, stand up, tell us your name.
Good morning. Gerard Elliott speaking. It would seem, based on the comments and the reality of the expansion plan being in the villages and most of that being floodplain, that there are potentially existing solutions that need to be considered. First and foremost, you would see, especially in coastal cities, beach communities, structures, both single and multifamilies elevated. We're seeing that now as a solution for a lot of the utilities. Perhaps it's time to consider the subdivision regulations, especially if you're encouraging multiple-unit dwellings, that if you're going to build in a floodplain, it is a requirement to elevate any structure, whether it's a single-family or multifamily dwelling of any income level. Thank you.
That's an excellent suggestion. I really appreciate that. And not only structures, but also improvements like heating systems, electrical systems, because that's where a lot of the damage has been over the last year. So thank you.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your name, and that was such a good suggestion. I want to make sure I got it.
Gerard Elliott.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for the Select Board? Very well. Would any other town officers like to make a verbal report at this time? Do any voters have questions of other town officers who may not be making a verbal report? But we have the list of town officers listed on pages 17 and 18 of the town report and appointed officers. I'm not sure they're covered by this article, on pages 18 to 20. Any other questions? If not, then having heard the reports of the town officers, we will move on to Article Article Three reads, "To elect all town officers required by law for the year ensuing." And as I may have mentioned before, there is a list of town officers on page 17 of the town report. Article Three, item one, is to elect a Select Board Member for three years by ballot. Nominations are now in order for the three-year Select Board Seat.
Nominate Cody Marsh for the three-year term.
Good, thank you. Could you identify yourself, please?
Yes, Larry Wykoff.
Thank you, Larry. Cody Marsh has been nominated for the three-year Select Board Seat. Are there other nominations? There being no further nominations, I would entertain a motion that nomination cease and that the clerk cast one ballot for Cody Marsh for the three-year Select Board Seat. Would somebody make that motion? Gary, can you stand and take a mic, say your name?
I'm Gary Sheekwin. I so move the suggested motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Larry, you're seconding. No, I'm sorry, it doesn't need a second for a nomination. It has been moved. Okay, it does need a second. Larry, you're seconded. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion being to have nomination cease and the clerk cast one ballot for Cody Marsh? Any discussion? There being no further discussion, we will proceed to the vote. All in favor of having nomination cease and the clerk cast one ballot to elect Cody Marsh to the three-year Select Board Seat, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes clearly do have it. You have elected Cody Marsh to the three-year Select Board Seat. We will now move on to Article Three, item number two. Article Three, item number two, is to elect a Select Board Member for two years by ballot. Nominations are now in order for the two-year Select Board Seat. Yes, could you take a microphone, state your name?
My name is April. And I nominate Tila Hall for the two-year Select Board Position.
Thank you, April. Are there other nominations for the two-year Select Board Seat? Larry Wykoff, could you s-
Nominate Rick Fletcher.
Rick Fletcher has been nominated for the two-year Select Board Seat. Are there any further nominations for the two-year Select Board Seat? There being no further nominations, nominations are now closed. And if there is no objection, we will have each candidate tell us about their qualifications and why they would like to be on the Select Board. We'll hear from the candidates in alphabetical order, if that's all right. So Rick Fletcher will go first. Rick, do you want to come down front and introduce yourself and speak into the mic?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rick Fletcher. I'd like to be a Select Board Member in the town of Cambridge. I've had a Cambridge-Jefferson mailing address for 56 years. I've been a registered voter in the town of Cambridge for 38 years. I've lived and worked in the town, or worked in the town here for 30 years now. Worked in the ski area, worked in the woods, construction. My significant other works in the school system for 20 years. We've raised four children, went through the school systems. We embrace the community. I've always followed town politics ever since I was a kid and always been interested and kept up. I go to Select Board meetings a few times a year just to see what's happening, just to observe what's going on, and figured it's time to- to observe what's going on, and figured it's time to participate and help the town move forward. I'm a member of the Cambridge Historical Society for over ten years, so I embrace the history of the town, but also now look forward to the improvements for the future of the town. In the past, I've spent, as a member of the Cambridge Fire Department, I spent nine and a half years. They, I like to take in all the information, making decisions on both sides of the coin, and to make justifiable things that benefit everything, the community as a whole. And I appreciate your support, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Now, Teela Hall, would you like to speak to the group?
Hi, I'm Teela Hall. Thank you for the nomination, April. I'm honored to be here for the second time. Instead of rattling off my resume, I kind of wanted to share a personal journey of like who I am. So in 2008, I ventured to Vermont for college. Post-graduation, I had nothing, nothing but student loan debt and twelve dollars in my pocket. The easy choice would have been to leave Vermont and go retreat to my parents' home, but I kind of offered, I opted for a different path. I applied for an unpaid internship at a Fortune 500 company, and I got that job, and they decided to pay me. I worked tirelessly because I envisioned a future with a home, a family, and a career as a manager. Now, a couple of years later, I bought a house in Cambridge, and in 2018, after four years of trying, I finally got pregnant, and simultaneously, a management position opened up. So I applied. Life didn't quite go as planned. I lost the baby. I was declined on management role, and my home faced foreclosure. I picked myself up. I returned to school for my business administration while working full-time, and I pursued that job again, and this time I got it. And today, I serve as a Director of Customer Service at the same Fortune 500 company. The house that nearly slipped into foreclosure still stands, and I am blessed with two beautiful children. I share this story because I wanted you to know that I can face challenges, I'm a lifelong learner, I can problem-solve, and adapt. Adversity shaped me for my journeys, it kind of equipped me for the qualifications that I have for you today. I now have the collaboration leadership skills that are needed in our community. I have the fiscal responsibility to make informed decisions, and I've gained experience on LaMoyale Fiber Net CUD, served as Secretary of Cambridge Economic Development, and I'm currently serving as the library trustee. And I've worked extensively on stabilizing that library in hopes that everyone feels welcome, and that is still my goal. My vision for Cambridge is to build meaningful and positive connections. With my business background, I think I can help support strategic decision when it comes to exploring the purchase for the community center, and perhaps have that build connection. And why do I want this job? I simply am here because I have a really deep love for this community. I have a desire to contribute to its growth, and I just really want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for everyone that publicly supported me in allowing me to share my personal story today. Thank you.
Now we will proceed to a paper ballot. You should have a sheet of paper containing ten numbered ballots. The paper is perforated so that you can remove one numbered ballot at a time. Each time we vote by paper ballot, we will use a ballot with a specific number on it. Only ballots with the proper number on them will be counted, so use care and use the proper ballot, which we will announce for each vote. You will need a pen. If you do not have one, then borrow one from a neighbor. The justices of the peace will move around the floor to collect your ballots, which will then be counted. The candidate that receives the majority of the votes will be elected. Remember, you must be a registered voter to vote. The election we are now voting on is for the two-year select board seat. There are two candidates, Rick Fletcher and Teela Hall. We will be using paper ballot number one, I repeat, we will be using paper ballot number one for this vote. If you wish to vote for Rick Fletcher, write his name on ballot number one. If you wish to vote for Teela Hall, write her name on ballot number one. Teela's name is spelled T-E-E-L-A-H, in case you were wondering, but exact spelling is There are the seats. I'll go, I'll go get one for you. There's a lot of empty seats in the front. It's good for him to move.
Hey, Mark?
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
It's day one, that's okay. Hey, you can-
I don't see like Jerry.
Will, he wants to eat grass pots.
Classic grass pots.
He's having a good time.
Let's do a pretty good sitting.
Slash it along.
Where's Paul?
Laird.
Laird.
Were you gonna say something?
Not Jerry.
Yeah, you wanted to.
Our first name.
Oh, well, it's interesting.
He's the boss, but I say so.
Joel, you know, by enough.
Yes, you did.
Good morning, my name is Rockin' Ron, representing the Cambridge Area Rotary. Mark your calendars, April thirteenth, buncow at the Cambridge Community Center. Who likes to play buncow? Sorry, Alan, you gonna win? That's right. Also want to announce that this year's July fourth Town Fair will be back here behind the school, and we are looking for vendors, artistic vendors, food vendors, and craft vendors, so contact Cambridge Area Rotary via our Facebook page. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Laird, would you like to address the group on behalf of the Trails Committee?
How do you follow the friendly pirate? My name's Laird McDowell, I'm the Chair of the Cambridge Trails Committee. If you were here last year, I spoke about some of our projects that we're working on. If you look at page fifty-four in the town report, there's the one-page summary of a lot of the projects we're involved with. I want to expand on some of those projects. Obviously, it's been a rough year for Mother Nature, two 500-year floods, one in July, one in August. Some of you were affected by those windstorms we had, I believe, in last month. I was. Two vicious storms came through, seventy mile narrow winds. I'm still cleaning up the trees that got knocked down. So obviously, the trails were impacted, particularly the-
Excuse me, Laird, can you hold just a second? Is there anybody out there who has a ballot that they have filled out that has not yet been collected? Sorry, Laird, you can proceed.
Lost my train of thought. I was talking about the greenway path, it was obviously heavily impacted by the July flood, as well as a lot of residences and businesses. But thanks to Jonathan, our town administrator, who's leaving, by the way, if you didn't know that, he's taking a position in Newport, he was able to obtain funding from FEMA, and we completely repaired the greenway path. It was built in 1996, 1.25-mile trail, runs along the LaMoyale River, and it was rebuilt to the point by Bob Edwards and Sons to back where it was when it was first built. Ten feet wide, compacted surface, but we included riprap on the Brewster River and LaMoyale River to prevent riverbank erosion. It was beautiful. Then we had the flood in December, where it warmed up and rained, and the Brewster River came roaring down from the mountain and destroyed parts of the greenway again, particularly behind the distillery and behind Obashan. And so, we are looking to get FEMA money once again to repair that, basically replace the surface gravel. The riprap held up very well to the flooding as designed. And I heard last night on the Channel Three News that President Biden has approved the governor's declaration for FEMA funding for repair of damage from the December eighteenth flood. LaMoyale County is part of that declaration, and Jonathan's going to apply for funding to fix the greenway once again, about seventy K. And I think this is also a bridge, Pleasant Valley roads can be fixed as well. So I'm glad to hear that. You may want to know why we keep fixing the greenway path year after year after year. The flooding has just gotten worse over the years. It used to just be spring flooding, easily fixed, now we're having catastrophic flooding, going back to the 2019 Halloween flood, which required repair. It's not just the greenways, the businesses that are on Route fifteen, the distillery, Obashan, they could be impacted as well if we don't fix the greenway and fix the riverbank. So that's how we keep doing that. The other thing we're working on, while the county ballots here, working exclusively with the Vermont Land Trust on fixing a lot of the trails that they have on their property, the Brewster River Trail, the trails up near West Farm Road, particularly the Pond Loop Trail, that's going to be rebuilt this summer. They've already contracted a local contractor to do the work to make that trail. It's a one-mile loop, flat trail, that's going to be wheelchair-accessible. We're also going to fix a smaller parking lot that's going to be rebuilt with adding some handicap parking. We're also going to fix, oh, the land trust, they're paying for this, not, not the town, I want to clarify that. The, the trail is called the Windridge Trails, the Lagers Loop, all the culverts lifted on those trails, so this is going to be fixed by a contractor as well. Be taken out and either replaced or, or an alternate solution. So that work is going to be done this summer, so those trails will be closed this summer, so that can be repaired. Take my notes. On page fifty-five, there is a breakdown of the cost at the bottom of the page for the July flood repair. I just want to mention a couple of things. It's not just the greenway that was impacted, the playground, the trailhead at Cambridge Junction, that was underwater, and the river had pollutants in it from the Johnson Waystation that failed. So all the mulch in that playground was replaced, volunteers did that, Peter was one of the volunteers, Keith Gross. So money for that was, hopefully get reimbursed by FEMA. Also, the, let's call the overflow parking lot on the other side of the river, it's a field we use for parking, that was flooded, and the driveway was taken out, so we repaired that as well. So hopefully FEMA will cover that. So I just wanted to explain those details. One other project we're working on with the land trust is the trail leading to the start of the Brewster River Trail. After you cross the Canyon Road Bridge, there's a very steep, washed-out path that takes you down to start the trail. We're going to install some, well, the land trust is going to hire a contractor to install stairs to make it easier to access the trail. In fact, we may be building the stairs for them, but they'll be paying for it. That's all I have. Any questions on, on the trails? We have a nine-member committee, all volunteers. We did a lot of work, and I mentioned the windstorms. We took care of approximately thirty downed trees with chainsaws. A lot of them were on the Lagers Loop Trail, where actually sugar maples got snapped off by the wind. It was hitting seventy, eighty miles an hour up there. We cleared all that out. We cleared Midlands Trails, Brewster River Trail, that's all volunteer work, so. Anything else, any questions about trails? Still counting. I've had all I can say. Thank you.
will speak briefly.
Good morning, my name is Peter Obstrop, I'm the Director at the Cambridge Historical Society, and our report didn't make it into the town report, but I, we put some copies out on your seat, so I can be sure that everybody here at least has one copy they can look at. Like most of the other organizations in town, we had a busy year, the flood did impact us, we had about eighteen inches of water in the basement of the Historical Society Building, which is the old Masonic Lodge right over here in School Street, and, but we were able to get all of the artifacts that we had in the basement out in time with a lot of help from the, some volunteers, from the Cambridge Fire Department, and from the town crews, very helpful for us. We have programs that we put on every year, open, available to the town, they are free, they are generally mainly about local history, and they start in March and they go through October. The one that we are having next Thursday will be an interview with Donna Nolan, who grew up in Cambridge Junction at the end of Nolan Street, and she will be talking about growing up in that area in, in the late forties and through the nineteen fifties. A little side point on that is, it was her father back in 1949 who was on a railcar that was hit by an engine, and he was one of the three men that were killed on that, and there will be a little bit about that and how that impacted the family. The, the programs that we have, like I said, are free. If you're not interested in the program, you might just stop by anyway, because we do have homemade goodies that we do have at the end, that are very good. We put out a newsletter, we have a website, and we do post a lot on there. So we look forward to seeing you, and we hope that some of you will be interested enough that you might come and join the society. Thank you.
lobby. If any of you were, I believe it's United Way, correct me if I'm wrong, but if any of you folks were impacted by the flood and you want some information, they're out front to, to help get, get any information about grants or funding or, or anything that else that may be helpful for those who need it, so just wanted to let you know.
All right, we have a result of the election for the two-year select board position. Rick Fletcher received, well, let me back up, there were a total of one hundred and ninety-eight ballots cast. There were a total of 198 ballots cast. There were no spoiled ballots. Rick Fletcher received 45 votes. Teela Hall received 153 votes. So you have elected Teela Hall. Now let's move on to Article 3, Item 3. Article 3, Item 3 is to elect an auditor for three years by ballot. Nominations are now in order for the three-year auditor position. Bonnie Hitchcock has served in that position in the past. Are there nominations for the three-year auditor seat? Yes?
I'm Jeannie Hutchins, and I nominate Bonnie Hitchcock.
Okay. You cut off there. Jeannie Hutchins?
Yes.
Thank you. And you nominated Bonnie Hitchcock? Any other nominations for the three-year auditor seat? There being no further nominations, I would entertain a motion that nominations cease and that the clerk cast one ballot for Bonnie Hitchcock for the three-year auditor seat.
Cody Marsh shall make that motion.
Cody Marsh has moved the nomination, no, has moved the motion. We need a second. Yes, sir?
Charles Giat, second.
Thank you, Charles. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no further discussion, we will proceed to the vote. All in favor of having the nominations cease and the clerk cast one ballot to elect Bonnie Hitchcock to the three-year auditor seat, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes clearly do have it. You have elected Bonnie Hitchcock to the three-year auditor seat. We'll move on now to Article 3, Item Number 4. That item is to elect a Lister for three years by ballot. That position has been held by Dale Copping. Nominations are now in order for the three-year Lister seat. George, you want to take a mic?
George Putnam, I nominate Dale Copping.
Are there other nominations for the three-year Lister seat? There being no further nominations, I would entertain a motion that nominations cease and that the clerk cast one ballot for Dale Copping for the three-year Lister seat.
Cody Marsh shall make that motion.
Charles Giat, second.
It has been moved and seconded that nominations cease and that the clerk cast one ballot for Dale Copping for the three-year Lister seat. Is there any discussion on the motion? There being no further discussion, we will proceed to the vote. All in favor of having nominations cease and the clerk cast one ballot to elect Dale Copping to the three-year Lister seat, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have elected Dale Copping to the three-year Lister seat. We will now move on to Article 3, Item Number 5. Article 3, Item Number 5 is to elect a first constable for one year. Unlike the previous elections, this item and all the elections that follow do not need to be done by ballot. Nominations are now in order for the one-year first constable position. That was held last year by Mark Schwartz. Way in the back. Can you wait for Mike? Thank you.
My name is Martha Coslet. I would like to nominate Mark Schwartz for the position of first constable.
Thank you. Mark Schwartz's name has been placed in nomination. Are there other nominations? There being no other nominations, then if there's no objection, we will close nominations and proceed to vote. This will be a voice vote. All in favor of electing Mark Schwartz as first constable for one year, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, and the ayes clearly do have it. You have elected Mark Schwartz to the first constable position for one year. We'll now move on to Article 3, Item Number 6. Article 3, Item Number 6 is to elect a collector of delinquent taxes for one year. Donna Warren, for the past year, has served as the collector of delinquent taxes. Nominations are now in order for the one-year collector of delinquent taxes position.
Joel?
Jeff Coslet, I would like to nominate Donna Warren for the position.
Donna Warren has been nominated. Are there other nominations? There being no other nominations, then if there's no objection, we will close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor of electing Donna Warren as collector of delinquent taxes for one year, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, and clearly do have it, so you have elected Donna Warren as collector of delinquent taxes for one year. Now we'll move on to Article 3, Item Number 7. Article 3, Item Number 7 is to elect a library trustee for five years. I believe Eva Rosberg has held that position. Nominations are now in order for the five-year library trustee position. Yes, Jan? Want to get a mic?
I nominate Eva Rosberg for the position, for the five-year position as library trustee.
Are there other nominations? There being no other nominations, then if there's no objection, we will close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor? Sorry, do you have a nomination? What is your question?
My name is Patty Genadio, and I have a question for the nominee for library trustee. As library trustee, what will you do to help the Varnum Library Board account publicly for the massive damage and turmoil caused by the library board since early 2021? Thank you.
So that is a little argumentative. I'm going to allow it, but with a fairly limited response. Eva?
When I was stepped forward to Phil's position, I answered that question, and the question is, my interest is in moving forward. I have no time nor expertise to address that question as posed.
There being no other nominations, and if there are no other objections, then we will close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor of electing Eva Rosberg as library trustee for five years, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it, and again, the ayes clearly do have it, so you have elected Eva Rosberg as library trustee for five years. We will now move on to Article 3, Item Number 8. Article 3, Item Number 8 is to elect a trustee of public funds for one year. I'm not sure that this position will be filled by the person that previously has held it. Are there any nominations for the position of trustee of public funds? Cody?
Well, I don't have this person's permission, but I was going to ask if Nancy Putnam might be willing to be nominated.
Thank you, but I decline.
If you asked me what the definition of this position was, I don't know that I could particularly articulate what the position does, but my understanding is it's not exactly a heavy lift of work, the workload.
And don't look at me for an explanation. The moderator does not get involved in answering questions like that, so.
Joel, I did have to dig into a little bit of state statute to find out what this position is. Basically, it is an individual that is assuring that funds that have been given to the town for a specific purpose are only utilized for that purpose. To give you an idea of how limited this role may, we have three such funds that are not cemetery funds, because those are managed by the Cemetery Commission. The Lemoyle County Grammar School Certificate with a balance of around $4,900, the School Curtain Fund for $207, and the Lease Land Escrow Account with a balance of around $1,658, none of which have had any activity for as long as anyone can remember. So the amount of time and effort that the individual needs to expend to fulfill their duties could be measured pretty quickly.
Could you stand up, please, and tell us your name?
I'm Jamie Gruel, and I'd like to nominate myself for that position.
Jamie Gruel has nominated herself for the position of trustee of public funds for one year. Thank you, Jamie. Any other nominations? There being no other nominations, then if there are no objections, we will close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor of electing Jamie Gruel as trustee of public funds for one year, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. You have elected Jamie Gruel as trustee of public funds for one year. Thank you, Jamie. My neighbor. All right. Moving on to Article 3, Item Number 9. This item is to elect a cemetery commissioner for five years. That position has been held by Kate Clark. Nominations are now in order for the five-year cemetery commissioner position. Yes, Larry? Can you stand and take a mic?
Yes, I'm Larry Wykoff. So Kate cannot be here. She would like to be nominated again unless there is somebody else who would like her position. So I guess I'm empowered to nominate her, and if somebody else wants to run, I reserve the right to revoke her nomination. Is that legal?
Very well. I think we understand. Are there any other nominations for the cemetery commissioner for five years? There being no other nominations, then if there are no objections, we will close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor of electing Kate Clark as cemetery commissioner for five years, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes clearly do have it, so you have elected Kate Clark as cemetery commissioner for five years. Item 3, sorry, Article 3, Item Number 10 is to elect a cemetery commissioner for three That position has previously been held by Sally Reynolds. Nominations are now in order for the three-year cemetery commissioner position. I see one hand up.
Hi. My name is Angela Pratt, and I nominate Sally Reynolds for the three-year position, cemetery commissioner.
Thank you, Angela. Sally Reynolds' name has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Just a moment. There being no other nominations, then if there's no objection, we'll close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor of electing Sally Reynolds as cemetery commissioner for three years, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes clearly do have it. You have elected Sally Reynolds as cemetery commissioner for three years. Article 3, Item Number 11 is to elect a cemetery commissioner for one year. My mistake. Two years. Martha Coslet has previously held that position. Nominations are now in order for the two-year cemetery commissioner position. Angela?
I nominate Martha.
Can you?
Sure. Angela Pratt. Martha has not been a commissioner before, but she would like to be one, so I would like to nominate her for the two-year position.
Very well. Are there any other nominations for the two-year cemetery commissioner position?
I'm Jan Schilling. I just have a question. What is Martha's last name, please?
Coslet.
Thank you.
Spelled just like Jeff Coslet's name. There being no other nominations, then if there are no objections, we will close the nominations and proceed to a vote. All in favor of electing Martha Coslet? All in favor of electing Martha Coslet as cemetery commissioner for three years, sorry, cemetery commissioner for two years, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes clearly do have it. You have elected Martha Coslet as cemetery commissioner for two years. And we will now move on to Article Four. Article Four reads, "Shall the town pay each select board member $2,500 for the year ensuing?" Would someone please move the question?
I'd like to move Article Four, "Shall the town pay each select board member $2,500 for the year ensuing?" Seems okay for me to do this, since you're not going to pay me anymore.
Thank you, Courtney. Is there a second?
Ruth Ann Reston, our second motion.
Thank you, Ruth Ann. Article Four has been moved and seconded. Article Four asks whether the town shall pay each select board member $2,500 for the year ensuing. Article Four is now on the floor for discussion, and since Courtney Lights moved the article, she has the right to speak first to the article. Courtney, do you wish to speak to the article? Like whether that's what was paid last year and all that?
Sure, I can do that. I sat down too quickly. Yes, that is the amount that has been paid to the select board ever since I've been here, so that's not a change this year.
Thank you. Are there others who would like to speak to the article? Dale, you want to come up to a mic?
My name is Dale Copping. I've watched the select board for the last seven years.
Dale, the mic's not picking you up.
Okay, here we go. Is that better? I can talk fairly loudly, actually, but anyways, the $2,500, I believe, was voted in for the select board from 2,000, probably four or five years ago, maybe six years ago. And for the amount of work that they do, and the amount of times that they meet and that sort of thing, I think we should consider that bumping it up 1,000. I think we're getting a good deal at that, but I don't know if that's possible or not, but I just thought I'd speak my piece on it.
Dale? In order to make that possible, you would need to propose an amendment from $2,500 to $3,500. Do you want to do that?
Okay, I propose an amendment from $2,500 to $3,500 for the select board compensation.
Thank you, Dale. Is there a second to that proposed amendment?
I'm Jan Sander, and I would like to second Dale's amendment. When you look at the total number of hours that the select board puts in, $2,500 is really a pittance, and I feel it's very justified to up at $1,000. If we were in better economic times, I would propose more, but we can't afford more. So I would second his motion very heartily.
Just one moment. It has been moved and seconded to amend Article Four by changing the amount to be paid from $2,500 to $3,500. Is there discussion on the proposed amendment?
Joel?
Cody Marsh?
So a quick census up here, I would ask that we politely decline. In my personal feeling is, I definitely don't do this job for the money, clearly. But speaking for myself, I thoroughly enjoy what I do, and I love giving back, and quite honestly, I probably wouldn't even accept the money, but I suppose it's, you know, the time away from home and time away from my son, it makes it a little bit more worthwhile. But I think we, as a select board, would politely decline any raise. So how you want to handle that, unless you voters really feel that strongly, I don't think that any of us up here would ask for it, so... Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the proposed? Any further discussion? Name and...
Get to that.
All right.
Paul Shortino, I wish to agree that we should raise that, not having that incentive raised for over five-plus years. Cody, I appreciate what you're saying, and perhaps if you don't want to accept that money, you could put it to a good cause in the town. But I think the board certainly deserves it, and I support it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to the issue? Then... If there's no further discussion, we will proceed to a vote on the proposed amendment. The proposed amendment would modify the initial motion so that it would read, "Shall the town pay each select board member $3,500 for the year ensuing?" If you support the amendment and the increase to $3,500, then you should vote aye on the motion. If you oppose the amendment and the proposed increase, then you should vote no on the proposed amendment. All in favor of the proposed amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the proposed amendment, say no.
No.
I can't tell from that who's in the majority, so we'll move from a voice vote to a show of hands. Initially, not a counted show of hands, just see if we can sort this out. So would those in favor of the motion to add the additional $1,000, raise their hands and keep them up for a minute. Okay, put your hands down, and with those opposed to the motion, raise your hands. It appears to me that the ayes have it. The ayes appear to have it. Is there anyone that would challenge that? Then the ayes do have it. You have approved the amendment so that the bill, the main bill that we are now discussing, now reads, "Shall the town pay each select board member $3,500 for the year ensuing?"
I'd like to make an amendment to make that 2,700. You know, I've been through this knee-jerk thing that we've done here like this, and I think we want to, you know, show our support of the board, but I don't know, is we need to knee-jerk at this rate and whatever at that point. So I would like to make a motion to make it 27.
All right, this is democracy in action, folks. Jerry just wanted to make my work a little more interesting, I think, but he's got a good point, totally legitimate, so we'll go through the amendment process again. Is there a second to Jerry's motion to modify the amount to $2,700? Ruth Ann, you want to approach the mic?
Hi, Jerry. I would like to second that motion to adjust it, and I'd always like some information as to what that's going to do to the other budget. We're going to have to vote on that as well, because that then will be modified. But I second his motion.
Very well, thank you. It has been moved and seconded to amend the figure that is now $3,500 down to $2,700. Is there discussion on the proposed amendment? Yes, sir.
I think there's a procedure error here. I think it should be done by ballot for all three amounts, because we originally started off with $2,500, and we didn't vote on it, and now we're jockeying between how much we're going to go up. I think it should be done by ballot, the three amounts.
All right, we're not to the vote portion yet, we're still in the discussion.
Yes.
So when we get to the vote part, you can request a vote by ballot, keeping in mind that will take quite a while. We haven't voted yet on the original amount, you're correct.
Yes.
We did vote to increase. We can vote to decrease. It's not uncommon to have dollar things fluctuate up and down by amendment.
Okay.
So hold that thought, and we'll get back to you.
Okay.
In terms of discussion, is there any discussion? The question was made about the effect on the bottom line that that might have. Would anybody on the select board that's familiar with the budget care to field that question?
I'm working on it.
While he's working on it, does anybody else have anything they'd like to say regarding the proposed amendment? All right, then we'll just all sit here for a moment and watch Jeff as he works on it.
So as currently presented, the tax rate for 2024 would be, sorry, .574, excuse me, 5740, that would increase it to .5750, so one-tenth of a penny. That would be for the $5,000 increase, going from $2,500 to $3,500 per. It would certainly be less, it'd be one-fifth of that if it was $200 approximately.
And can you address what the impact would be on our later article that has a certain dollar amount? Would we have to amend that to make things balance?
No. The budget, as we are presenting in Article Five, does not include the Select Board stipend or the article for the Cambridge PTA.
Very well. Any other questions or discussion? Yes, sir. No, you need the mic.
Brian Johnson. If the select board is willing to continue to accept $2,500, why should we force the money down their throats? They're doing a public service which they're all willing to do, and they do very, very well, and don't force them to take the money.
Thank you. Yes, there's another question, gentleman in the yellow.
That's right, Elliot. I think it's laudable that the select board has offered to decline the offer, and I want to acknowledge that, for the increase of either amount. I believe that the original intention, in my opinion, is worthy to recognize the volume and quality of work that they do on behalf of the town. If it is available and is encouraging for other people to want to also volunteer and serve as an enticement, because everyone's economic means are different, then I believe it should remain as the original suggestion of increase to $1,000 so that it is available. And of course, it is also available for the select board to decline to accept. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the proposed amendment to reduce the amount from $3,500 that you previously voted for down to $2,700? Further discussion? There's no further discussion, and it's time to vote. If, it was mentioned, a request for ballot, just so that you know, it would take 25 voters who wanted this handled by ballot in order for it to be voted on by ballot. Unless there are 25 people, then it would be a voice vote.
Joel, just, I believe the way I understood the gentleman's question was, I think what he was thinking was, there would be three choices, $2,500, $2,700, and $3,500. But if, I believe, the way it really works is a yes or no to an amount, any amount, whatever the article or the amendment is. Is that correct, as you understand?
The way it's set up right now, this is an amount, up or down. If we were doing this all over again, we could have maybe established two or three different numbers and had a process for doing that on one vote, or still would be multiple votes, but...
I just wanted to make sure that he understood where we're at, I guess.
So, yeah, where we're at, for better or for worse, is voting whether to adopt the amendment of making the figure $2,700 rather than $3,500. All right, so all in favor of the amendment that would set the amount of the select board compensation at $2,700, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Let's again do the show of hands. So all those in favor of the amendment reducing the amount to $2,700, raise your hands and keep them up briefly. And thank you, you can put your hands down. Those who oppose the amendment, now raise your hands. I can't call it. I'm afraid we're going to have to do this not by ballot, but by, the next step is standing and then counting. So, no, we're not going to do a ballot. Going to try it by, first we'll try standing, there's a sequence here. First we'll, yep, Justice of the Peace, come up here where you've got some elevation. Let's see if we can make this work and have it be a relatively quick vote compared to a paper ballot. Are you folks all okay coming up and standing on the stage? The moderator does not get involved in counting. So what we're going to do is, we're going to vote again, this time it'll be by division of the House, which is a standing vote. Those of you who are in favor of the proposed amendment reducing the amount to $2,700, please stand and remain standing until you're told otherwise. Jan, are you all set? Do you have your count?
Did you count us back here?
Yeah, Rose did. Rose, let me put that.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, those who opposed the amendment from $3,500 down to $2,700, would you now Along the back wall on the, the corner to my right, yes, you folks that are looking around, are you standing because you're voting?
Yes.
You may sit down. Thank you for your patience. All right, here is the result of the standing counted vote. The numbers may not be exact, but there's enough of a separation between the two so that there's really no issue here. There were 78 ayes counted and 51 noes counted. So the ayes have it. So you have adopted the amendment setting the amount at $2,700. All right, so now we return to the original motion as amended. The original motion asks whether the town, the original motion as amended asks whether the town shall pay each Select Board member $2,700 for the year ensuing. Is there any further discussion on the main motion as amended? There being no further discussion, we will proceed to vote on Article Four as amended, whether the town shall pay each Select Board member $2,700 for the year ensuing. Vote aye if you are in favor of the motion as amended, vote no if you oppose it. All in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes clearly do have it. You have adopted Article Four as amended. And we will now proceed to Article Five. Article Five asks whether the voters will authorize for the period from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, total fund expenditures of $5,593,706.63, of which $2,903,304.63 shall be raised by property taxes and $2,690,402 by non-property tax revenues. Would someone please move the Article Five?
I'll make that motion.
Jeff Coslet has moved the motion. Is there a second?
Cody Marsh, I'll second that.
Article Five has been moved and seconded. The motion seeks to adopt Article Five authorizing, authorizing total fund expenditures in the specified amount, of which a specified amount would be raised by property taxes and a specified amount by non-property tax revenues, all during 2024. The motion is now on the floor for discussion. Since Jeff Coslet made that motion, he has the right to speak first. Jeff, would you like to speak to the article?
I would.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Joel. What I'd like to do is just take a couple moments quickly to describe to you the process of developing the budget. So the budget development begins in the fall, typically around October. And what we, as the Select Board, attempt to do along with working with the town administrator and the town office staff, as well as our road foreman, Eric Bozan, what we look to do is build this by functional areas. So we're taking it piece by piece and trying to develop it, but with a framework or an eye toward what the final target would be. One of the great helps that the Select Board has is working with a town finance committee. And what that group does is they meet with, excuse me, the town boards and committees who receive town appropriations to get their request for the coming year. So what they are, is a first review or a vetting of those town appropriation requests. Once they, the finance committee has met, then they make their recommendations to the Select Board for appropriation levels for the ensuing year, not only for town boards and committees, but also for the outside social service organizations. One of the things that a budget represents is the priorities and the necessary items that we foresee for the coming year. So really, the budget is just a numeric reflection of what those priorities and projects are for the coming year. One of the things that particularly we attempt to do throughout the entire process is take what's called a revenue-centered approach, which basically means we are looking at how much revenue we feel is appropriate to generate, and then look at how we can most effectively and efficiently allocate those, those resources. So we're not building a budget by, you know, here are all the expenses, and then here's the final result, here's the tax rate. We, we kind of try to do it both from a revenue standpoint and a balanced approach, so that all along the process, we have an idea of how much revenue is going to need to be raised through property taxes and what that is going to mean in terms of what that tax rate is for all of you as property owners. So with that as the background or the grounding of the process, what we were able to arrive at for the 2024 budget is a tax rate increase of 1.76%. That is, keep in mind, only for the municipal taxes, has nothing to do with the school-based taxes that you'll be acting, or able to discuss this afternoon, but are voting already by Australian ballot on those articles. So what we are focusing on is only the municipal budget. So the budget is contained in your town report from pages 22 to 32. So as you can imagine, 11 pages, it's a fairly extensive document. One of the highlights that I guess I can give you, if you want a brief overview, is many or most of the lines, either revenue or expenses, we have tried to keep fairly consistent from one year to the next. When you look at things like personnel costs, just like as Rich and Lucy were saying when discussing the school budgets, you have wage pressures, you have benefit cost pressures, we reflect those as well. But again, we try to manage those as effectively as possible. One of the things that we did in 2024 was, in the 2023 budget, we did not fully expend all of the revenues. Part of this was because some projects did not occur that we thought were going to, or timing issues. We had expenses or we had revenue in one year, but we're not going to see the offset until this coming year. What that meant was, at the end of 2023, we had a carryover of about $510,000. What we chose to do was take $440,000 of that carryover and apply it toward 2024. That way, we were not stockpiling funds, but we were utilizing those to, again, keep the tax rate from being any higher than it was. There were two significant areas, though, in 2024 that are different than what have, what we have seen in the past. And Cody Marsh is going to be speaking to those in particularly, and if you've been following Front Porch Forum, you saw his recent posts, ones that he had originally put out in December, but reposted in the last few days, which talks about the Cambridge Rescue Squad and what's happening there, and then particularly the impact that this has on the budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cody.
So, so many of you are probably already aware that the biggest change or the biggest increase in, in this year's budget is, is the amount that we're proposing to, to allocate to the Cambridge Rescue Squad. It's kind of, it's probably no shock to anyone, we've, we've been having some challenges with, with Cambridge Rescue in the last few years. I've, I've worked extensively with, with the group in trying to figure out, and the Select Board as well, trying to figure out ways to, to help them, help them as, as best as we can. Cambridge Rescue Squad is a separate private nonprofit. We, we do allocate quite a lot of their funds from, as taxpayers here. Cambridge Rescue covers the entire town of Cambridge plus a small portion of Fletcher. And Fletcher does contribute a, a small portion of their budget as well. The, the real, the problem has been a, a large turnover in the leadership at Cambridge Rescue in the last few years. And historically, the, the revenue, or the cost, so to speak, to, of Cambridge Rescue is, is largely based on the labor, is, is the majority of the cost. And that has been relatively low over the past 25-plus years because of the number of volunteers that have, have basically propped it up. And that is not unique to this community. A lot of nonprofit rescue agencies exist across the state, and I'm sure across the country, and, and they are also seeing dwindling numbers of volunteers. So the, the cost of running an EMS agency has, has been rising across the state and across the country. And given the, the amount of turnover in leadership in the last few years, it's not surprising that the numbers of volunteers have, have started to dwindle away, to, to the point that last winter, they were, they were missing 60% of their calls, which is an all-time historic record. I think in the previous years, if they missed 5% to 10%, that was a large number, or 10, I'm sorry, 10% would be a large number and was very uncommon. Since, since the leadership has, has changed in the spring of, of this past year, in 2023, by the, the appointment of Mike Curtin, who's in the back of the room here, he's been the acting chief since, I believe, May of last year, they've, they've made 96% of their calls, a majority of which, of the missed calls are because they don't have a second crew. They, they're already attending to an individual and they don't have the number of people to, to fill the second ambulance to make those calls. They have, in fact, been able to fulfill a second crew on a lot of calls, and they've continued that, that response rate into this year. In 2024, they're still maintaining a 95% to 96% response rate. So that, that has been a dramatic change. And the reason that, for that change is because we're paying staff to, to be there when we need them. And that is, of course, the, the, the majority share of the cost is, and what we're proposing in this budget is staffing of Cambridge Rescue 24/7 with, with qualified EMTs, AEMTs, and paramedics. And, and that's really what the, what the majority of that increase is. Just as a comparison, if you're curious to how we compare to some of our neighboring towns, I, I did some research into some other rescue agencies and their costs and what other communities face. So these are, these would be based on the 2023 budgets, because the 2024 budgets are likely being voted on today. Stowe pays $135 per resident, and that's just taking the amount of cost that they, that they submit to their, to their Stowe, or to their rescue agency divided by their population. So it's $135 per resident. Morristown is about $103 per resident. Johnson is about $42 per resident, and Fairfax is $24 per person. And what you can tell clearly by the differences there is how many volunteers they have. Fairfax has a tremendous number of volunteers, and they have very few paid staff, which is why they're able to offer such a reduced rate to their residents. Whereas Stowe and Morristown are almost the opposite, are almost completely paid staff. And Johnson is, I believe, a mixed bag of, of both. But Johnson is also covered by NEMS, who covers Johnson, Hyde Park, Eden, Waterville, Belvidere, and I'm sure many, many more towns. So they're quite a bit of a larger agency. With this budget here, we're proposing would, would be about $125 per, per, per resident here. So that would put us roughly halfway between Morrisville and Stowe. And that's, that's not an insignificant number. The, the real question is, you know, what price do we want to pay? Or what value do we, do we see our local EMS service? And how much are we willing to, to pay for it? It is, I've seen and I've, I've spoken to the, to the state legislators, I, I testified at the State House about a month ago about Act H622, which would be trying to change some of the ways that of funding of Cambridge Rescue, or, or of rescue in the state of Vermont. I think some of the things would be helpful, but it's probably a drop in the bucket of what's really needed. So, you know, the, and another, another metric, I'm sorry, let me go back, is, is how we look at the budget. It would be about $25 per $100,000 of assessed value for the resident rate, residential rate here in town. So another way to look at that. So, I mean, I'm certainly open to answer any questions, and I believe Mr. Curtin, Chief Curtin is here too, if, if there's any direct questions for rescue. I know this article is specifically about the budget, so I don't want to hammer just on rescue, but I know that is the big chunk of this.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussion regarding Article Number Five?
Other questions or discussion regarding Article Number Five?
Hi.
Hi, Anita.
Anita Lotto. Just a quick question, Cody. A lot of us contribute that $50 a year for that. Have you had much, you know, involvement, success with that?
So you're referring to the subscription program?
Yes.
So again, it's been a little bit of a tricky thing with the turnover at leadership. I believe they're continuing the program. I think they're going to look at revamping it. I'm looking at Mike, and he's nodding his head as I'm talking, so it's been a mixed bag. And unfortunately, with the turnover at the helm, it's been hard to, I think, promote the service. So it's had limited success, and I think that's certainly one of the avenues that they are looking to pursue on is kind of promoting that service more to try to entice more, more people to subscribe. And the program is, you pay $50 for a year subscription, and basically, if you have to call 911, your costs are covered by that fee after, you know, insurance and everything else. So it's a very common way for rescue agencies to collect some additional funds. I would say that some of the other things, too, that they're looking at is researching, doing transports. So inter-facility transports is a market that a lot of agencies use. We currently have not, historically, Cambridge Rescue has not done that, but it's something they're looking into. And then looking at grants and trying to hammer on maybe more donations and other revenue sources that they can find are also things that they're trying to look at as well.
Other questions or discussion? Yes, you were just about to stand up. Can you get the, over in the corner against the wall?
So, hi, Amy Bannister. So thank you for all that information.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name?
Bannister. Bannister.
Bannister, thank you.
(laughing) Just a quick question. So ninety-four to ninety-six response rate is not great, right? I mean, it's, it's okay, it's a little underwhelming. So with this new budget, do you have plans to, like, address that? Do you feel like that response rate is directly rated to a payment? Or is there other factors that contribute to that? Are there?
So there's two reasons typically why a call is missed. The first and the most serious reason a call is missed is there's nobody available to go. The second reason that there's a missed call most often is that they have a crew available, but they're already responding to another call, and that there's, there's a lack of a second crew to attend to the second incident. So I think in years past, the number of missed calls was, the majority of them was, there was just nobody to make a call, a single call, let alone if there's two calls. So the improvement has been, we're making the primary calls almost 100%. It's when number two comes in, or number three comes in, is where we're having a problem. And really, if we're talking about putting a paid, a 24/7 coverage, which is a full crew, that's for one crew. Paying to put a second crew in, we're talking about doubling what we've already included. So again, we probably, here in Cambridge, we average four to 500 calls a year. So that's, you know, one, one and a half calls on average per day. So there's a lot of time that people are sitting. And it doesn't, of course, that doesn't always happen, you know? It could be three, four calls in one day, and there could be nothing for three or four days. So it's trying to allocate the resources to try to capture the most opportunity that they can, and that's kind of the industry.
Thank you. Deb Neville has her hands up, hand up?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to-
Can you state your name?
Oh, Deb Neville, you just stated my name, so I thought I was all set, thanks. Yes, Deb Neville. So I guess I'm just looking for, Stowe is 135, Johnson was 42. Where are we falling in between those towns for our cost?
One twenty-five, as the budget currently is.
Other questions? Sally?
Sally May. I'm just wondering about the billing practices, whether it's in-house billing, or if there's a contracted service, and if that aging and all of that is being reviewed and tightened up perhaps?
So they do subcontract that out. It's the individual, it's rescue billing, EMS billing is a very, very complicated-
I've done it, so I know. That's why I'm wondering if it's a company, what company that is?
I believe it's EMS, MBS, sorry, Medical Billing Services. This individual, this is what he does, is he bills for quite a few agencies across Vermont, and I think maybe even New Hampshire too. But that's his speciality, and I believe Cambridge Rescue has used him, I think exclusively, for quite a few years. I've talked to the individual, his name is Jeff Spencer, I believe, and he's very knowledgeable, and he has been actually speaking to the legislature quite a bit to try to help get the funding models changed, because that is quite a bit of the big challenge, is the amount of money that these folks are reimbursed at. And trying to capture the maximum rate is definitely that challenge. So they are definitely, having spoken to him, I believe he is a very knowledgeable and a good resource for these folks.
I'm Larry Wykoff. Been involved in firing EMS since 1972. I watched the Severance build a group of volunteers twenty-some-odd years ago with a lot of enthusiasm, and they were doing very, very well. And over the years, as you know, to volunteer on an organization is a huge sacrifice today. I'm on the Finance Committee, and we talked about this a lot, and we feel that this is money well-spent. And I'll give you an example. Even though I'm retired from the fire service, we still have a scanner that runs in the kitchen, and we hear all the calls. And what's most impressive about the leadership of Mike Curtin and the team is with the paid staff that's in-house, in the rescue building, their response time is literally seconds, thirty seconds, whatever it takes to get to the ambulance. We've, I've also listened to, you know, the volunteers. Okay, if I'm on the rescue squad, it's going to take me five to seven minutes to get to the building, get in the truck. So there's another, you know, maybe ten-minute delay. The concerns of the elderly in this town, and I guess I'm in that group, my hair is the right color, and the children, is that they want a rapid response time. When you call 911, you expect that ambulance to be on the way. No delays. Ninety-six percent aside, that's excellent, by the way. A hundred percent is the best, but you're never going to get it. But we had an incident up on Katy Hill where two children went in the water, and rescue was right there behind the state police. They were literally there within minutes. These are the kind of things that you can't really put a dollar tax on. You can't say, well, you know, that's too much. These people are dedicating their lives. We're getting a top-notch staff. I encourage you to support this part of the budget. It's something that we've struggled with the eleven years, I was on, or twelve years I was on the Select Board, we struggled with this since 2010 that I can remember. So we can ask all the questions. I think Cody's done an excellent job of summarizing this, and I think we have to support this part of the budget. Thank you.
I didn't want to talk. Larry, you forced me into it. My name's John Dunn, and I just, I've been thinking about this a lot, been following the articles, and, you know, I apologize, I don't want to offend anybody, particularly in the EMS community, but I do want to give a little perspective of my own from being an emergency medicine provider for twenty-five years or so, and lived in this town for thirty. I think, I definitely think we need to support the Cambridge Rescue this year with the budget as proposed, and I don't think there's time to do anything else, and I think they've been doing a great job, and I really admire the work that they do. I just want to say that in terms of saving lives, which Larry mentioned, there are probably about four or five things that save most of the lives out in the field. One of them, of course, is defibrillation of someone who's having a heart attack and they're in an abnormal heart rhythm. If you can get to someone in the first four minutes, your chances of saving their life are greatly improved. Another one is epinephrine for people having anaphylactic shock. Another one is tourniquets for bleeding. And now, unfortunately, a fourth one would probably be Narcan for drug overdoses. So there's a few things that really make most of the difference in terms of saving someone's life in the first few minutes. Some communities have full EMS services with EMTs of all different levels, paramedics, multiple ambulances. Others have none, but there are options in between. There are some communities that have rapid response teams made up of primarily EMTs that can provide those life-saving measures in the first five minutes, and then that gives more time for an ambulance to come to transport the patient to the hospital. So if this town wants to have EMTs and paramedics and ambulances all available within five minutes, then sure, you know, you need to pay for that. You might want to consider some sort of modified arrangement with a rapid response team and then ambulance backup from another service or another town. Obviously, we can't debate this right now, but I don't think there's any literature that shows that having an ambulance on every street corner saves more lives than having defibrillators and epinephrine and those other things on every street corner. Not every town can afford to have an emergency room, for example, so we regionalize that. And I think eventually the time is going to come, because of the cost of providing the care, the amount of training that's needed, that areas are going to have to regionalize, and I think that's happening already in many parts of the country, particularly the Midwest. Okay, so that's one thing I would just encourage the town and the Select Board to think about, as well as EMS, to look at those, some of those different options in the future. And the other thing is that I understand about thirty to forty percent of the calls come from smugs. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I know there are some life-threatening ski injuries, clearly head injuries, internal injuries, but probably the vast majority of those are orthopedic injuries. It might be worth having a conversation with smugs. Could they provide some sort of vehicle to transport the patients with non-life-threatening injuries to the hospital and take some of the burden off of Cambridge? That's my two cents worth. Thank you.
All right, I see a couple more hands up. Let's go back in the corner near the wall.
Linda Davis. To go off of that, I was just wondering, do smugglers contribute any money toward the ambulance service? And if not, that might be a way to help fund it.
Cody?
I believe Cambridge Rescue is in talks to see if there's anything above and beyond the, I mean, obviously, Smuggler's Notch contributes quite a lot to our town via property values and then that kind of tax income. So in essence, yes, they do pay already, but they, Cambridge Rescue has been in talks with them to see if there's a more of a separate donation type of thing to help alleviate some of these costs, because they are a very large component of our community in our town. I will say that with the disc golf tournament, the big disc golf event that was, happened this last summer, this last fall, the disc golf tournament, folks through Smuggler's Notch did pay Cambridge Rescue to have a crew on standby throughout the event, and that was a kind of an additional revenue boost that they weren't planning on last year, and it sounds like in talks for that's going to be a big event in the years to come. And I think that that's a great PR thing for Cambridge Rescue, to get out there, to offer those types of services for big events, such as the disc golf, and to charge a premium for having their staff there. I will say, as a point of clarifying the coverage, they had a crew dedicated to the disc golf, but they also had a crew at the station for the rest of the town. So it wasn't like it drew people away, drew staff away. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, second row?
Sorry, rigor mortis sort of sat in there. I haven't heard anybody-
Name, please?
I'm sorry, Judy Walls. I haven't heard anybody address the training of the personnel. And this is very personal for me, because my husband had a massive stroke in 2019. The rescue squad who came stood in my living room and said, "He's not having a stroke." It took a long time to get him where he needed to get to be. There was issues with getting him down the stairs. These people are no longer with the rescue squad. I salute the current people. What I really want to say is, when you think about this budget, it's not just having them get there, it's having the right assessment done when they get there that makes the whole difference. My husband is permanently disabled. We'll never know if he had gotten to assistance quicker, if the people who arrived there had said, "We need to get him right away." Instead, they said, "He's not having a stroke, it's probably just a bug, we're going to take our time." And I want that addressed, not just personally, but for everybody else here. Think about if you were the person on the floor, and we just lost a community member who was, what, only thirty-seven years old, to a stroke. So those things happen beyond what Mr. Dr. Dunn addressed, and I want to bring up that I'm hoping that this new budget really educates the people so that when they get on scene, they know for sure. And if they don't know for sure, then they get you to the hospital and they don't take their time. Thank you.
So I certainly don't want-
Jeff, just state your name, please.
Sorry, Jeff Coslett. Not that I want to curtail any discussion on the rescue budget, but there are, you know, eleven pages of budget line items, and I just wanted to make sure that if there were any pressing questions that folks had on any other areas in the budget, that we could cover those as well.
Are there other questions regarding the budget that you would like to address to the Select Board, or comments that you would like to make?
Hi, Deb Neville. I would just, you know, second to what Judy Walls said, and possibly it'd be nice if Chief Curtin could speak to that.
We have heard a lot of discussion, Deb, about the Cambridge Rescue Squad. I realize it's a big issue, but I think we should move on to the other many pages of the budget, if there are questions.
Maybe just to give a outsider's view in terms of Cambridge Rescue, they do spend considerable time and resources in training, getting advanced certifications.
I saw a hand go up, but if there's somebody else, I think Amy Bannister, you've already talked once, so let's see if there's somebody else that wants to speak now.
Look to your left, Deb.
Yes, sir. Yep.
My name's Tim Suter. Both Larry and John have great points. For everyone to know where I stand, my parents were found, part of the founding members. I spent four years as a volunteered volunteer. But how, how long is this going to continue with the rescue squad? Like right now, it, you know, the big jump, and then is it going to continue to be an increase and an increase? Is Cambridge Fire going to want to become a paid position? You know, what are we getting into? Do we really need paramedics, which is a very more expensive clientele versus an EMTI or a lesser trained, excuse me? And, you know, we, we already have a budget to give them, they have two ambulances on a reoccurring replacement, and they don't even get used, you know, like, so it's just asking if, like, like John said, absolutely pass it this year, something needs to happen, but are you guys planning on looking into this deeper? Are they looking to actually increase revenue where they're going to be self-sufficient and not relying on the town with a higher budget every year?
In terms of, I'm sorry.
I'm encouraging moving on, if we can, off the rescue squad.
Sure.
Are there any non-rescue squad questions? Ruth Ann, want to identify yourself, please?
Ruth Ann Rest, I would call the, move the previous question.
All right. Ruth Ann has moved the previous question. That's also commonly known as calling the question. Just one moment. That does require a second. Jerry, are you seconding or?
I thought I would rescue you. I would second that.
All right.[736.13][736.13](LAUGHTER) That was Jerry Cole, and he has seconded Ruth Ann's motion to call the question, also known as previous question. And I see Martha back there waving her hands. Identify yourself, please.
Martha Coslet, I have a question, a point of clarification. We are calling the question, and what are we voting on? On the whole budget or just the rest? What are we, what are we voting on, please?
So, that's a good question.[774.63][774.63](LAUGHTER) So if we, if you agree that we should call the question, or also known as the previous question, that requires a two-thirds vote, and what it does is it stops all discussion on this article, Article Five, and you would proceed to a vote. So you're essentially cutting off any further discussion on not just the Cambridge Rescue Squad discussion, but the whole budget discussion around Article Five. So if you feel you know enough about the article and the budget that you're ready to vote on it, then you'd be in support of basically ending discussion. So is there discussion? No, hold on. I've got a chart here that I, when we get into these parliamentary details. There is no discussion on motion to call the question. I do have the right, though, to ask the person that made the motion basically what your motivation is to cut discussion off on the budget at this time.
My idea was to focus on the budget, the whole budget, and not just part of the budget. And so by calling the previous question, which was the motion on the budget, my feeling was we would go back to talking about the whole budget. We've been talking about rescue, but not, and that's a part of it, but the question is the whole budget, and that's called the question.[900.32][900.32](APPLAUSE)
So if, if we proceed with calling the, with the previous question, it will end all discussion on the entire article.
On the budget.
On the budget, not just rescue squad. And we will go directly to a vote on Article Five on the budget. There's no discussion allowed on this. No, there's a motion on, on the floor. So the motion is to basically to call the previous question, which is to end all further discussion on Article Five. If you are in favor of ending discussion on Article Five at this time, you should vote aye. If you are opposed to ending discussion at this time, you should vote no. And as I said, it requires a two-thirds vote to end discussion. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of calling the previous question and ending discussion on Article Five, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say no.
No!
All right? The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and we will go to the vote on Article Five. All right, so at this point, you may be asking, what does Article Five provide for? Article Five reads, and the motion is, shall the voters authorize for the period from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024, total fund expenditures of $5,593,706.63, of which $2,903,903,304.63 shall be raised by property taxes and $2,690,402,000 by non-property tax If you are in favor of authorizing those expenditures in those amounts, then you should vote aye. If you oppose those expenditures in those amounts, then you should vote no. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say no.
No!
All right. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Five. And it is now 11:59. We need to check whether they're ready for us downstairs. How do we do that? Check in whether the... So if they're ready for us down in the cafeteria, then I'll be asking for a motion, or actually be seeing if you'll agree to a recess of one hour? Of one hour, and then folks, assuming there is a recess, then folks that want to stay for lunch down in the cafeteria, stay. Those that want to go, go. For those of you who leave and for those in the cafeteria, we would encourage you to return for the afternoon session. We still have a lot of important business to do, including the very important question of whether or not town meeting will continue to be held in person like this, or if it will essentially move to Australian ballot. And after we're done with the town business, then the town of Cambridge School District has its annual meeting where we'll be having elections and discussing a number of matters, although the budget in that will be handled by Australian ballot. All right, so they are ready for us downstairs, so unless there's some objection, we will recess for one hour.[1222.25][1222.25](APPLAUSE) Okay, before we move on to Article Six, Peter Upstrup of the Historical Society asked me to make a correction to something that he said. He thinks he said that meetings were on the second Thursday of the month. The Historical Society meetings are on the second Wednesday of the month. So the next, this program coming up is on the second Wednesday of this month. All right, Article Six is the next article that we'll be taking up. Article Six reads, shall the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for the Cambridge Elementary School Parent Teacher Association for Community Events? Would someone please move the article? Deb?
Deb Neville, I'll move the article.
You need to come to a mic or take a mic and tell us your name and...
Deb Neville, and I moved, moved the article.
Thank you, Deb. Is there a second?
Cody Marshall will second that.
Article Six has been moved and seconded. Article Six asks whether the town shall raise and appropriate the sum of $2,500 for the Cambridge Elementary School PTA for Community Events. Article Six is now on the floor for discussion, and since Deb Neville moved the article, she has the right to speak first to the article. Deb?
Thank you, Joel. Hi, I'm Deb Neville. The hat that I'm wearing today is a CES PTA president, and we collected a bunch of signatures on open house, and I, so I really appreciate all the folks that signed our petition to get this article in front of all you voters. It was so wonderful to see such a turnout today, 198 people voting, and I know we've lost some people, but thanks to you for coming back. We appreciate it. We are looking, as a new PTA board, to ask the town for the $2,500 because we're really making this a very dynamic PTA. We're bringing a Ready Tech Go program on March 20th, so we hope you can sign up for that. That's the first of its kind, and it's something that the school and the tech team and the enrichment teachers and guidance have really wanted to see happen. We have our tech ambassadors, so those are the sixth graders that are going to help us do that. We're going to offer childcare and a nice dinner for everyone. So that's just one event that's coming up, and we wrote a grant to the National PTA and rewarded that for $1,250. We'd like to see more events like this, and so that funding that we're asking for of $2,500 could help bring that back again, and another event, maybe a science or a health fair or something to that effect. We did hand out some of these on the, on the chairs and on the bleachers, and it kind of just gives you a snapshot of the things that we've already done and are going to continue to do for this school year. Lori Hebert is our treasurer, and so if she wants to answer any questions around what the funding was, it really is a board where we take funding in, we fundraise, and then the money goes back out to the community. The children have really loved a lot of the dances that we've done. We're helping support the sixth grade trip, and we partner with several different people in the community. So I can hand it over to Lori, or we can open it up to questions.
So Deb, are you done for the moment?
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? Lori, would you like to address the group?
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am a proud parent of a third grader. I, this is my first year as the, serving as the PTA treasurer. I've been involved with the PTA for three years. I also serve on the school board and wear different hats, and I'm someone who really is inspired by bringing different people together to, to join forces to benefit our school community in any number of ways. And, you know, I, as Deb mentioned, the flyer that's on the seats around the room, there are many things that we've raised funds for that we have then just invested back in our school community this year. And I think we're, you know, we're a small but mighty group. We're hoping to, for that to, to build momentum year after year. But we, you know, right now, I think the needs that we prioritize are direct requests from our school community to support enrichment activities like the Modern Times Puppetry Artist in Residency that happened this year. There was an anti-bullying assembly that we helped fundraise for this past fall. And so those are our priorities, but we also really want to do more with community and family supportive events. We do a fall survey, and we've heard from our families that they have all sorts of parenting challenges and things that they would love to join forces with the school on, and they also would like to see those events be accessible. So as Deb mentioned, this grant for this Ready Tech Go event coming up later this month is allowing us to offer childcare and dinner for our families so that they can take part in this. And we really, as we think about the next school year and beyond, there's a need, and we would love to offer more events like that that go beyond what our current capacity for fundraising is. And so we're, we'll, we're resourceful. We'll go after grants, but we would, it would mean the world to us to get this kind of grant funding from our town so that we can do and continue to do this kind of work for our school community.
I'd also just like to add that through the National PTA, we have taken the steps to be recognized as a school of excellence. So we did a fall survey, and we had, I think, 70 people respond. We're going to put out a spring survey, and that's part of the process to reach the school of excellence. So I hope when you see that, you'd be willing to just voice your opinion. It's a handful of questions, and hopefully we get that and we can put that proud banner out front for CES. I'm a mom of four here, my four children are here. I can't speak highly enough about this school and this community. Thank you so much.
Lori, and just for the record, could you state your last name? I didn't catch that.
Yes, Lori Hebert or Abert?
Hebert. Thank you.[1617.22][1617.22](APPLAUSE) Any further questions?[1622.83][1622.83](APPLAUSE) Or discussion? George?
George Potnam, just wondering if someone could speak to, what is, where's the line between town and school funding?
That, sorry, Jeff Coslet. That's an excellent question, and there is a line that's pretty clear by state regulations, and that is that any funding that would be provided by the town to the PTA has to be for programming that is completely separate from any type of programming that is directly tied to the elementary school. It can be enhancements, it can be supplemental, but it cannot be a continuation of an existing program by state law of education services. So just a point of clarification.
There being no further discussion, we will proceed to vote on Article Six. Vote aye if you are in favor of having the town raise and appropriate $2,500 for the Cambridge Elementary School PTA for Community Events. Vote no if you are opposed. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, say no.
No!
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted Article Six. We will now proceed to Article Seven. Article Seven reads, shall the voters authorize the collection of property taxes for their calendar year 2024 in one single installment due to be delivered in the hands of the treasurer on or before Thursday, November 28, 2024, at 7:00 p.m., with postmarks not accepted as proof of delivery? Would someone please move Article Seven?
Courtney Lights, I'd like to move Article Seven.
Is there a second?
Charles Giet, second. Charles Gietz, second.
Article Seven has been moved and seconded. The motion seeks to adopt, the motion has been made which seeks to adopt Article Seven, authorizing collection of property taxes for 2024 in a single installment due by November 28, 2024 at 7:00 p.m., with postmarks 'not accepted' as proof of delivery. The motion is now on the floor for discussion. Since Courtney Lights made the motion, she has the right to speak first. Courtney, would you like to speak to the article?
Yes, I would. I, this is just us agreeing when taxes have to be due and the date, and it is something that the town has to vote on. I would like to put forth an amendment to this article that the date for this year ensuing be December 2nd because this year, November 28th, is Thanksgiving. So I would like to put forth that amendment, please.
So Courtney, to make sure that I understand, you are seeking to change the reference of November 28, 2024 to December 2, 2024?
2024, yes.
So before we can proceed to discuss the main motion, we need to address the amendment that has been proposed, if there is a second. Yes, sir. Microphone, please.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Greg. All right, so it has been moved and seconded, that Article Seven be amended so that the date that's indicated becomes December 2, 2024.
Monday, December 2.
I stand corrected. The amendment that's been proposed would change the date to Monday, December 2, 2024. Everything else in the motion would remain the same. Is there discussion on the amendment? All right, I'm not seeing any hands for discussion. If there's no further discussion, then we'll move to a vote on the amendment. If you are in favor of changing the date from November 28 to Monday, December 2, 2024, then you'll vote in favor of the amendment. If you are opposed to that change, then you'll vote no. All those in favor of the amendment to read Monday, December 2, 2024, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and the amendment has passed so that the main motion will now have the date of Monday, December 2, 2024. Would someone else like to speak to the motion as amended? There being no further discussion, we will vote on the motion. So the motion now reads that the, shall the town seek to adopt? Strike that. Shall the town authorize collection of property taxes for 2024 in a single installment due by Monday, December 2, 2024 at 7:00 p.m., with postmarks 'not accepted' as proof of delivery? The motion, if you are in favor of that, then you should vote aye. If you are opposed to that, you should vote no. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted an amended Article Seven. All right, now we move on to Article Eight. Article Eight reads, "Shall the town of Cambridge elect its town officers by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA 2680 subsection B?" Would someone please move the article?
Cody Marsh, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Sam, you want to take a mic?
Sam Lotto, second.
Article Eight has been moved and seconded. The motion seeks to adopt Article Eight, whether the town of Cambridge shall elect its town officers by Australian ballot. The motion is now on the floor for discussion. Since Cody Marsh made the motion, he has the right to speak first. Cody, would you like to speak now?
Yes, I would.
Please proceed.
So I'm going to do my best here just to provide some facts. I don't, I don't want to, I'm going to try my best to leave my opinions out of this so that you all can make your most informed decision.
I'm having a little difficulty understanding over here. I don't know if it's just because we're away from the speakers or what, but...
I can speak...
Can you all hear well? All right.
Mr. Moderator, if I could ask for a little bit of leniency, I know that this is specifically about Article Eight, but Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten are all about Australian ballot, and I think to better understand, for the voters to better understand why there's three separate articles, I would like to kind of provide some information so that they can better vote on Article Eight.
Why don't you proceed, and if at some point I feel that you are getting too far afield, I will jump in.
Thank you, sir. So as you, as you know, Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten are all about changing the way we conduct our town meeting. Now, the reason that there are three separate articles is because we can vote on all three of these independently from one another. They all are worded correctly in such a way that follows the state statute of how to change how we do town meeting. If you, if you wonder why you would want to or what an example of a, of voting these articles differently, all you have to do is look at our Cambridge School Board and our school budget meeting, because we, we vote on our budget, which would be, you know, we vote on our budget for the school board as Australian ballot, but we still vote for officers and all other questions from the floor, and that'll be in the meeting after this one. So we, we can look at Articles Eight, Nine, and Ten separately, knowing how they might affect one another. Specifically for Article Eight, for electing officers, if this is voted up, officer positions as you see listed in Articles One and Articles Three in today's warning would no longer be voted on from the floor. To appear on a ballot, can't, potential candidates would need to submit a petition with at least 30 signatures or 1% of the registered voters, whichever is less, before the sixth Monday prior to town meeting, and that'd be submitted to the town clerk. So this year, that would have been, I believe, the last week of January, if I'm, if I'm correct. If, if a candidate did not get a petition in or they did not get enough signatures, if you wanted to still run, you could run on a write-in campaign if you so choose. One, one difference, but with an Australian ballot, being, being elected as an officer in Australian ballot versus an in-person town meeting, as an in-person town meeting, you would, if, like, for example, with a select board having two seats, if you wanted to run for select board for the three-year seat and you failed to get elected there, you could also run for the next seat or any of the other seats. When you do a, you know, by ballot, it's essentially, if you're elected, you're elected, and if you're not, you're not. That would be a, a difference in that. Articles Nine and Ten, if those were to be passed, an informational session would be required. The school board had their informational budget session last evening, so those would be a, a change for those particular articles as well, something we don't currently do. And again, all, all Australian ballot items are either 100% up or 100% down. There is, there is no debate on the article. You cannot amend, like we've amended a few articles now, you would not have that opportunity. Obviously, at the informational session, there is room for discussion on how the budget was developed or, or what questions are for and the meaning and repercussions of them. I also figured I would let a little bit of the history of how we, we got to where we are here. So back in 2017, there was a group of people that were put together called the Community Engagement Team, and they were tasked with, among a few other things, of how to make, working with the town and the town government in improving town meeting better for its residents and the voters. Their, what, their report that they provided to the select board in the fall of that year did not recommend either moving the date of town meeting to, let's say, a weekend or an evening, nor did they recommend switching to Australian ballot. Obviously, that was quite a few years ago, and since then, we've had the COVID pandemic, which did change how we, you know, think of the world and, and how we conducted business. So in, in 2020, for the 2021 and the 2022 annual town meeting, the state legislator gave us options, us municipalities, options under the emergency declaration that allowed us to either postpone town meeting to, you know, possibly June or, or some warmer weather day so that we can conduct business outside, or allowed us to, allowed the select board to change the way we conduct business temporarily to Australian ballot. Obviously, we, we chose to go the Australian ballot route. I think we, we all felt on the select board at the time that the feasibility of getting a large group of people outside was, was probably not the best way to do it, and not to mention delaying the budget approval for several more months would have been a tough ask. Interesting to note, the town of Waterville next door did opt to do that, and they, they held their meetings outside for two years in a row. But those, those emergency declarations ended last year, and we, we felt as a select board last spring that we had to make a decision without any way of changing the way we conduct business. We defaulted back to the in-person town meeting rules, which have been in place here in the town of Cambridge, I believe, since, since day one. At the last second, at the 11th hour, the state did allow the select board, the, the select boards, the authority to change how they conduct their in-person, their, their town, annual town meetings. But we decided at the time that, and I was chair of that board, that we decided that it was so late, with the morning was drafted, the book was drafted, and plans had already been set in motion to continue forward with, with conducting our business as an in-person town meeting. That emerged, that, that change that the legislature, legislature allowed was for last year, '23, and technically for this year, '24. But once again, that will end at the end of this year, and assuming they don't change it again, it will revert back to all pre-COVID rules. I, I personally felt last year that I, I stuck my gun to having an in-person town meeting because I didn't feel that it was the select board's authority to, to decide how we, we vote in town and how we elect our officers, how we determine or vote on our budgets. I felt that power resides with all of you folks, and that's still the, the, the best way or the only way to officially change how we conduct our businesses is with a floor vote. So I pushed very hard to get these three articles on this year's town warning, and I'm very interested to hear what, what you all have to say. So that was all I had.
Thank you, Cody.
Thank you, Cody. Is there further discussion on Article Eight? Sally?
Sorry. Sally Mae, I appreciate that you're putting this out there. My only concern is, is the people who can come are the ones that are voting on it, not the people who can't be here, which is why you'd be switching it over. So I just wanted to make that known to people, that I have a hard time voting either way because I was able to make it, be able to be here, but for those people who can't be here, I struggle with that.
Jacne, I'm just curious...
I'm sorry, can I get your last name again?
Ni, N-I-E.
Thank you.
I'm just curious what kind of voter response you had in the couple of years that you had Australian balloting versus what kind of show out you get at normal town meetings.
Cody, are you going to field this?
Probably a smart select board member would have had that number right off the top of their head. I, I don't recall the exact numbers. I don't know if anybody else recalls them, but I will say, I, I do believe that they were higher with Australian ballot. Again, I can't recall the percentages. I will say to Sally's comment that this is the state, you know, approved way, how you do it, unfortunately, is how you change the conduct of, of town meeting. And, you know, our neighbors in Morristown voted last year to do the same thing from a floor vote, and they, they resoundingly chose to change the way they conduct their business. I believe in Elmore, they voted at the same time, and they voted to keep in-person town meeting via an in-person meeting, so...
Going to have to hold you on that, just hold the thought, Sally. Further questions or comments? Larry?
Yes, I'm Larry Wakeoff. I don't have the exact numbers for this gentleman. I do believe they were higher, but they were also done during 100% ballot mailing to every resident in the town, if I'm mistaken, Donna. I, I believe so. This, this is a hard one, we've been talking about this for years, and I can empathize with the people that aren't here. I can't empathize with the people who choose not to be here, who are the most vocal opponents. If you really wanted to be a part of this and you knew what was being voted on, you would have found a way to get here. And now, yes, I'm retired, blah, blah, blah. But I used to make it to town meeting even when I had a full-time job and I, I didn't get town time off. I think we have to abide by the people here, by the rules. I think the select board is being very forthcoming in bringing this to us in, in a vote, but I would, I would point out that the lively discussion about a $200 or $1,000 pay increase to the select board this morning, and the conversation that we had concerning the rescue squad, that is information that you may or may not have gotten through other means. Yes, we have Frontiers Forum, yeah, we have some Facebook groups. But you have to, you have to weigh the pros and the cons. I personally enjoy the pro, questions, pros and cons, some of them, you kind of shake your head. If you've been here a long time, you hear the same questions over and over, but we're very polite and not, you know, saying anything. But as much as it's a struggle, I, I support keeping town meeting as it is as a tradition.
Don't worry, it's not a MyPage. Big PowerPoint presentation, go for it. I know all about that.
Only for, Sam Lotto here. Thank you, Larry, for those comments, and to be honest, Larry, once again, I think we agree on it more than we disagree on. However, in the spirit of full disclosure, I plan on obviously voting on the next three articles. The one that I'm more inclined to vote on is the middle, but Joel, I'll stay within this one. So here's where I'm coming from. I've struggled with this one to community members, and I really respect... I've struggled with this one to community members, and I really respect and appreciate the legacy of town meeting, and, you know, really the unique community event that it is. But Cambridge has grown and changed. I mean, Anita and I have been in the Lemoyle Valley, Anita, all her life, and I've been here for 35-plus years, and we've been in town for 31. And one of the biggest changes is really due to the very inclusionary culture that we have developed in this town. And with that inclusionary culture, we really have a patchwork of a workforce that contributes to the town, pays their taxes, and because of that patchwork workforce, you know, they're not here working in town like once upon a time they were. And I respect what you're saying, Larry, but I really think we need to, you know, address that most notable concern. If we look around today, how many essential workers are actually here? That would include numerous small business owners. They can't close shop today. They can't lose that revenue. They can't give the time off to the workers. They've got to get out there and make, make that revenue today. That includes our healthcare providers, and let's face it, looking around the room, many of us benefit from those healthcare providers. All right? And I mean that in the best way. We shouldn't overlook the fact, and this was feedback from the voting, we do have some friends and neighbors that can't make it, not because they weren't once here and vocal, but due to medical issues, and they would still like to be able to vote, and it's very meaningful to them. We have service members, and Charlie, I know how much you care about them, who maybe they couldn't get a duty day off, or they're deployed, who can't be here today. And let's face it, we have a very diverse economic community, and we have those on the margins. They don't get paid time off, they can't miss that wage, and on top of that, they couldn't pay the childcare to miss that wage today. So let's keep that in mind. But what I'm really getting at is we passed an inclusionary policy in this town, thanks to Sally Mae and others. And I really have to ask ourselves, are we being inclusionary by the way we conduct our business? And is there a middle ground here with these articles, where we can still have a, a town meeting, where we, and that level of participation? And I want to remind you, and look in the back of your books, you can participate in town government almost any day of the week here. You can stay up late with these guys every Tuesday, every other Tuesday, all right? You can go to finance meetings, you can do a ton of stuff to have your voice heard, and craft, you know, what it might look like in the final result. And coming in once a year to craft that after all the hard work they've done, and what your, well, the school board votes on the budget by Australian, and I was on the board then, it wasn't easy. But the time and energy they put into this, and to start messing with it then, you might want to ask yourself, is that sort of, you know, backseat driving, 11th hour? But the real issue I want to get at is, again, is this, are we really being aligned with the inclusionary culture? And is there a better way to engage all members of the community? So I'll just conclude with that, and I thank you for that. And with that, I shall sit down. Thank you.
Jerry, looks like you want to be part of the discussion?
Yes, Jerry Cole. I'm very much in, in favor of town meeting, of course, being a moderator, and I always thought that it was much better to have 200 people or 250 people vote on something than 580 people vote on something that they know little about. And I don't like the idea that, you know, I served overseas, and I couldn't vote, but I didn't mind that. But when you take away my vote to stand up here and to do a little legislation, in other words, you can move this budget, you can change things here, I mean, within confines, because that's the guardrails that your, your warning gives you. But you're still able to, and to, and to talk something over and to come to compromise here, rather than say, up or down, up or down, makes a difference. And they say, well, you could go to informational meetings. At the school board meeting, was it last night, I think you had an informational meeting on their school board? You had like five people there. Five people. That's all. I mean, to say you can get the information somewhere else is nice to say, but if you can't get out the vote, if you can't get the town meeting, you, you're not going to go to these informational meetings because you can't do anything at the informational meeting other than get information, and you don't want to be confused with the facts. I mean, let's vote on my, 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 my record, I mean, my taxes going up or down, I'm going to vote, and I want to vote. And, and I think this debate, and, and you also find out information from the town. There's some people with information out here, there's no other way to garner it until we all come together and see what's going on. So I am all in favor of keeping it the way it is.
All right, so I'm going to try to alternate views. We've heard pro and con, just heard against the Australian ballot option. Is there someone who's in favor of the Australian ballot option that would like to address the, address the group? Just, let's see if there's hands that go up here. Okay, so I'm not seeing any hands, so you have a question?
Yes.
And give us your name and all that, please.
Hi, I'm Denise Webster, and my question was, I wanted to just make sure we are only voting on town officers on this article, correct?
Article 8 is limited to town officers. Article 9 gets into budget, and Article 10, public issues. All right. George, I'll get to you in a minute. Yes, in the corner.
Hello, my name is Mary Fafford. I grew up here in Lemoyle County and went to college up at JSC, and there, in many political science classes, we talked about democracy, of course, and we talked about different levels and engagement of democracy. And one thing that I really took away from those classes was that what happens here in our towns and our states affect us so much more than the rules and laws that are coming out on the federal level. And I think it's so important that everyone, regardless of your age and your ability to come to an event like this, should be able to have a chance to vote. Looking at this lovely crowd of people here today, I will put myself on the younger end of things. I am working a full-time job, like many of my friends, like my husband, who works up at Smugs, they're not going to shut down the mountain for town meeting, and we know so many amazing people in our community work up there, and also have the right to vote on the things that we're voting on here today. So I will just say across the board, for all of the things we're voting on the next time, please consider the people that are not here today that also have the right to vote on these matters. Thank you.
I'd like to propose, I'd like to make a motion to amend Article 8 to exclude the town moderator.
Article 8, as it now, as it was originally written, says, "Shall the town of Cambridge elect its town officers by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 DSA, so-and-so." Would you, are you moving to amend so that it says, "Shall the town of Cambridge elect its town officers accept the town moderator by Australian ballot pursuant..."
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Cody Marsh, I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to amend Article 8 so that it excludes the moderator position from the town officers that would be voted on by Australian ballot. George, you made the, the motion to amend, therefore you have the right to the first discussion.
Thank you. So to give an example, for, if the amendment passes and the motion as amended passes, and there's no other amendments, the effect would be that the moderator would still have been elected today under Article 1. Everybody else would have been elected by Australian ballot, and we would know the results tonight. If...
I didn't, I'm sorry, George, I didn't catch the end of that sentence. We would know the results?
You wouldn't know the results until ballots are counted after 7 o'clock tonight, under Australian ballot voting. If Article 8 had been in effect as written for today, Jerry would still be moderating because the election to replace Jerry, the results would not be known until after 7 o'clock tonight. Other towns split the, the election of moderator and do it from the floor while electing all other officers by Australian ballot. I know of Underhill and Middlesex as two examples. That strikes me as, if this article passes, that strikes me as a, a good outcome to still elect the moderator from the floor. That's why I made the amendment.
Thank you. Is there other discussion on the proposed amendment?
Yes, Joel, I'd like to, Cody Marsh. So I guess a, a unique situation that I could see with the amendment, George, is, I'm sorry, I'm not talking to George, I'm talking to the crowd, Mr. Moderator, is, so we approve Article 8 with electing a, a town moderator at a town meeting, in-person town meeting, and then Articles 9 and 10 both pass. So the only business that would be conducted at an in-person town meeting would be electing a town moderator, as one issue I could foresee. Now, how that works, I, I do not know. But not knowing the results of Articles 9 and 10 before 8, it might cause a little bit of a snafu, so, one thing to think about.
Sarah Lurie? You, you're on the list of non-residents who are permitted to speak, so take a mic, tell us your name.
Thank you, my name is Sarah Lurie, and I'm not a voting resident here. I pay taxes, I'm resident here, I'm on town commissions, but I cannot vote. So I hope you'll indulge me in making a comment and a question about the Australian ballot and versus in-person town meetings. And I think the in-person town meeting is an incredible thing. You don't know how lucky you all are to have this. I recognize that not everyone can come to town meeting, but I think the discussion that occurs here, and the, the ability to amend things that occurs here, is really, really, really important. So my question is, is it possible to have a town meeting like this, to be able to discuss the issues, to be able to make amendments to the articles, but then to have the actual voting on those to occur by Australian ballot? People who are here can vote straight away, people who are not here can find out what the amended articles are, and they can vote, provided it's before, whatever it is, 7 o'clock in the evening. And that way, both things can, you, you get the best of both worlds, because you get the discussions, you get the amendments, and you allow a greater number of people to vote. Thank you.
Would someone like to try to respond to Sarah's question? Courtney?
Hi, Courtney Lights. I, I do want to say that, I think to say that moving to Australian ballot completely separates any sort of in-person participation in government is not realistic. I think that there is the opportunity to discuss what it might look like to have Australian ballot, and also have some sort of a town meeting where you do get to play a part in the process. And I think that the town of Duxbury, Vermont, for example, does that in conjunction with their pie for breakfast. If we had the same numbers for a meeting as happens at pie for breakfast, well, that would just be fantastic. So, so I do think that there is the possibility of creating a situation where voices still can be heard and debate can occur, and at the same time, still serve those people who are unable to attend here today to vote on the issues that impact them so directly. And especially, I think, for their representation, if we're talking here about Article 8. Somebody can correct me if you think I'm wrong, but I do think that the amendment that has been put forth makes a lot of sense, because were you to choose only to elect representatives by Australian ballot, then you would perhaps want the ability to elect your moderator on the day of town meeting. And my guess would be that if you choose to pass Articles 8, 9, and 10, you, there would not necessarily be a need for a town moderator. Is that true?
I don't believe it's true.
Okay.
But no, I, sorry, I am not supposed to give any opinions. Forget I said that.
But it might not be quite as pressing to have that town moderator elected on that specific day if that speci, you know, if that wasn't necessarily needed. But I do think that there is a way to marry a greater level of representation for our voters in town, being more inclusive of everyone who's here, and still have active participation in government, and an opportunity for people to come and speak in person.
Is there other discussion on the amendment? We're trying to bring this back to the amendment now. The amendment is to exclude the moderator from the offices that are elected by Australian Jeff Coslet?
Go ahead, Brian. That's okay.
Brian, Brian Warren, I just want to make sure I completely understand. The moderator is an officer?
The moderator is elected, so I shouldn't be answering questions. I can't help myself sometimes, but I'm going to have to zip it here.
Because if the moderator is an officer, it should have been voted on under Article 3, where it says all town officers. So either you are or aren't, just like that clarification.
Anybody want to answer that? I'll try to.
I, I'm not an expert on town meeting, but I do believe the reason it's oriented as such is so that you start the meeting by electing the person running the meeting, and then you have somebody who's running the meeting all the way down through. And you, Article 2 is such that you're hearing the reports of the officers, is to hear some kind of general overview information of the town, and so that you can further decide on Articles 3 through whatever they happen to be. So I believe that's, I believe that is the only reason that the moderator comes first, is so you determine who's running your meeting.
So anyone answer, is the moderator an officer? If not?
I don't know if I, I would quote the Vermont State statute, but I believe they are a town officer, yes. They're an elected town official.
I just have a point of question.
Okay.
Martha Coslet?
Thank you.
I can't remember, are we voting on the amendment? Have we already passed the amendment?
We are still supposed to be discussing the amendment.
The amendment, okay. My comment is for after we do that, so I'll wait.
All right, thank you. Is there further discussion regarding the proposed amendment? Dick?
Can you describe what the actual roles of the moderator are beyond town meeting day?
Can you tell me your name?
Dick Glof.
Thank you. I'm not, I can't answer the question.
Can I use that microphone?
Yes.
So using my cellphone here, Vermont State statute seventeen twenty-six forty-six, town officers, number one, a moderator.
For the record, that was Charlie Giet.
Actually, can I? Talk to that amendment?
Are you talking, are you answering Dick's question?
Yeah.
Peter, state your name and...
Name is Peter Engelstad. The, it's a practical, our past moderator's been with us for forty-plus years. If in fact, he had passed away, sorry Gerry, during the year, the only way you can start the meeting and have a moderator, if he had passed away, is to have that election first. It's just practical.
So to answer Dick's question, so the town moderator, I believe, and there's probably other people in this room that could define the role, is to lead any town meetings or town discussions. So yes, we have an annual town meeting, but we could have a special town meeting later in the year. It has happened before. We could call any number of special town meetings, but they would be in charge of all meetings for the year ensuing. In the past, we've held kind of public forums, so to speak, on different events, and we've asked Gerry in the past to kind of moderate these special meetings, so to speak, that weren't town meetings, just kind of general discussion groups. So I think that's the, the general role is to help moderate any meetings, town meetings or otherwise throughout the year.
Further discussion regarding the amendment? All right, seeing that there's no further discussion regarding the amendment, we will move to vote on the amendment. So to review, the amendment proposes to change Article Eight so that it would read, shall the town of Cambridge elect its town officers except the moderator by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA six-eight-zero subsection B? If you are in favor of the amendment adding that exclusion of the moderator provision, you should vote aye. If you are opposed to the amendment, you should vote no. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
All right, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it, and you have adopted the amendment. So now, we are back to consideration of Article Eight as amended and to discussion on Article Eight as amended, if any more discussion is desired. Is there further discussion on Article Eight as amended? Peter?
Peter Upstrup, talking about the participation in town meeting. If you go to an Australian ballot, all of the discussion that we just had, you wouldn't be having. And also, considering the election of officers and having to put all of the paperwork in early, you would not have Peter Engelstad on the board right now because he was inspired at one of the town meetings in order to run for that position. So I think we'd be losing some very important parts there. Thank you.
Gentlemen in the back, had raised your hand? Greg, is it? No.
Greg Sniders.
Greg.
I'm curious.
Could you stand up, please?
Sure. If we adopt these three things, this is in perpetuity, correct? And is there a mechanism to undo it?
I can answer that.
Jeff, identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Jeff Coslet. There is a mechanism to unwind these. It would be a process similar to what we're going through right now, only if we adopted the Australian ballot to undo Australian ballot voting, you would be able to do that by using Australian ballot. Sounds a little... For any, any of the three.
Article Ten specifically refer...
Hold on. Identify yourself, please.
Cody Marsh.
I recognize Cody Marsh to speak next.
So it specifically regards to Article Ten is changing how you vote on non-budget questions. So how we conduct business, this article here is a non-budget question. So if Article Ten is passed, we would be voting on non-budget, non-town officer election positions as an Australian ballot. So to switch any of the three, it would be by Australian ballot, assuming Article Ten passes. I know that's kind of confusing, but...
Further questions? George, let's see, if there's anybody else. Gary, you haven't talked yet.
This discussion is getting very confusing because we grouped all three of these articles at once. I'd like to call the question on Article Eight as amended, and then we can continue this discussion on the other implications with regard to the other two articles.
All right, there's been a motion to call the question. Is there a second to that? Sam, can you do it the formal way, please?
Right, Jan's closer. I'm Jan Sander, and I second that.
Thank you, Jan. It's been moved and seconded that we call the question. When you call the question, it's by a two-thirds vote. No discussion is allowed, no amendment is allowed. So if you're, I think we're ready for that question. If you vote in favor of calling the question, what you're voting to do is to end discussion on Article Eight as amended and move directly to the vote. So if that's what you want to do, vote aye in favor of calling the question. If you want discussion to continue longer on Article Eight as amended, then you should vote no. So all in favor of calling the question and ending debate or discussion on Article Eight as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes appear to have it. The ayes do have it. So we will proceed now to the vote of Article Eight as amended. Article Eight as amended reads, shall the town of Cambridge elect its town officers except for the moderator by Australian ballot pursuant to seventeen VSA two-six-eight-oh subsection B? If you are in favor of adopting that article as amended, you should vote aye. If you are opposed to adopting that article as amended, you should vote no. All in favor of Article Eight as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to Article Eight as amended, say no.
No.
So, we can go through show of hands, standing. I'm wondering if there's interest in doing this by ballot, paper ballot. If there are twenty-five people that are in favor of paper ballot, let's, let's see a show of hands. All right, clearly there are twenty-five people, so we will proceed to vote on Article Eight by paper ballot. Justices of the peace, please get ready. Now, listen carefully, folks. You've got a sheet of ballots with numbers on it, and we are going to be using the ballot number two for this vote. To repeat, use ballot number two for this vote. If you are in favor of Article Eight as amended, vote yes or yea. If you are opposed, vote no. If you vote yes, it means you want to elect town officers except the moderator by Australian ballot. If you vote no, it's that you want to retain traditional town meeting for the town officers except the moderator. The justices of the peace are circulating. If they're not coming near you, try to get their attention. While the ballots are being collected and counted, we have a couple more individuals representing local community groups that would like to speak to you. Sam Lotto? Sam Lotto would like to speak with you regarding Lamoyle Fiber. They'll come down in a minute.
All right. Good afternoon again. Like a bad penny, then I'm back. All right, so I am a member of the Lamoyle Fiber Communications Unified District. That CUD was voted in back in 2020 by the governor, or basically what he said back in 2020. I'll just give you a quick history. And if you want to follow along in your town report, turn to page sixty-one. So you can either continue to listen and read and breeze, or tune me out, whichever works. But on sixty-one, we have a really nice report by our executive director about the Lamoyle Fiber CUD. Now, back in 2020, the governor said, because of pandemic, and I think we all saw, the need to get rural fiber into our community rolled out. So Communication Unified Districts were stood up. Basically, our unified district is everywhere, is basically from Belvidere right on through up to Eden, and we even brought in Woolcut, Marstown, and Stowe. Because like anything, we need an economy of scale. I'll roll forward because this year in particular has been very exciting, really, for all of you. Our main charge has been not only to figure out how we're going to roll fiber in a rural community such as ours, but how can we do it in the most cost-efficient manner? I won't get into the prices right, I'll just jump to the case, jump to the chase. To get fiber internet accessible to the four thousand addresses throughout the county, it's going to cost twenty-five million dollars. All right? That's why a lot of your local providers aren't here. Now, the good news is, our friends in Washington, as you've heard over the past few years, have quite a bit through the infrastructure bill. So it isn't just for broadband, but it's for your bridges and your roads and your schools and so forth, has brought a lot of money to Vermont. Of that, that money stops in Montpelier, and a group called the Vermont Communication Broadband Board oversees it. So we, basically over the past year, have applied for our construction grant, and we got fifteen million to roll fiber here in the county. We also signed rather a partner agreement with Phidium Fiber, I'll step back now, better known as Consolidated. But Consolidated is going to turn out to be a great partner because they're the ones who are going to run the fiber and help build the network. They also brought ten million of their own capital to the table to make up the total twenty-five million in build-out costs. So those are some of the big picture things. Now what you're probably really interested in, I'm a Consolidated customer, or I might, I don't really have anything of value at all. When will that become accessible to me? In May is when we're really going to start rolling trucks and stringing fiber to the home. For Cambridge, amazingly enough, and I know this isn't even probably true for everybody here, we actually have some pretty decent accessibility, thanks to our friends at Stowe Cable, Mount Mansfield, et cetera. So we're going to hit a good amount of Cambridge, but not all of Cambridge in Phase One. But we're working really hard to manage the budget that any addresses that not included in Phase One, because that'd be more for twenty-five, maybe we can pull them in. So in summation, we're very excited about what's to come. There's a lot of work, incredible amount of work that has gone on behind the scenes to make this happen throughout all the member towns. Having served on your school board and other entities countywide, I've never seen a group from the county work so well together. Maybe it's because we've had such a singular mission, but that aside, it's a terrific board. So again, May is when trucks start rolling. That's when we start getting fiber accessible to over four thousand addresses. We hope to have over ninety, ninety-five percent of the bill done by the end of twenty-four. And then we're going to finish up with South Cambridge and some other addresses no later than into twenty-five. So exciting times ahead. This is how rural fiber gets done. And I think it was Brian, you and I were discussing last year. Municipalities haven't done a great job in overseeing telecommunications. Couldn't agree with you more. The good news is, when the build is done and the homes have fiber to the home, you'll actually be a Phidium customer, and they will be the ones who, basically, you will be a subscriber of theirs. We will take a step back, we will provide oversight, because your tax dollars do own the network that's being used to build with those dollars. So we will stay on, provide oversight, make sure, and if there's any lawyers in the room, it would be a case study in the contract that they signed with all the agreements in it and all the service levels agreement. And I'll just conclude with, I know Consolidated doesn't have the best name in the world. However, they will be the first to tell you that they want people off the copper lines, off the poor service, because it's become like a used car to them, that it costs more to continue to fix it than to keep it on the road, both by a financial point of view and by reputation. both by a financial point of view and by reputation. So, exciting things to come. They're still counting, I can take some fairly straightforward questions. Dale? Stowe Cable and that operation always will be Stowe Cable. Phidium is our partner, but Stowe Cable has some amazing plans throughout their service area to upgrade, I don't want to advertise, off the cable on onto the fiber. They're off doing their thing. They have said though, because they could be, could have been one of our partners, you know, guys, there's a possibility we could work together down the road. But they are, Jeff and his crew are off doing their thing, they're not part of this at this time. That's a great question. The question is, can we run fiber where there's already Stowe Cable with a connected subscriber base, basically? So, like any federal monies, it comes with stipulations. There's a little clause called "overbuild." You can only overbuild 20% of the area, and the intent cannot be to get those subscribers. You can only overbuild because maybe this set of addresses is here that are being served by Stowe Cable, we'll say. But the only way, an efficient way and a good use of your tax dollars is to route through that area so we can get to this group of subscribers over here. But it's not to subsidize any grab of their customer base. They're very clear about that. And believe me, getting some of these business plans audited already, they don't mess around if you show any appearance of that. In other words, they take back the money if you screw up the grant.
Sam, we have a, we have a file.
Yep, I'll wrap it up. I'm around, you can go on the website, contact us, but exciting times to come, so thank you.
All right, so we have the vote tally completed for Article 8. The total number of votes cast was 128. The number of yes votes was 58. The number of no votes was 70. So you have rejected Article 8. As amended. And with that, we will proceed to Article 9. Article 9 reads, "Shall the town of Cambridge adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA 2680, subsection C, subsection 1?" Would someone please move the article?
Sorry, that was supposed to be me. Cody Marsh?
You move the article, Cody.
I'll move the article.
Is there a second? Sam, can you grab a mic? Sorry. Sam Lotto, second. Thank you, Sam. Article 9 has been moved and seconded. The motion seeks to adopt Article 9, whether the town of Cambridge shall adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot. The motion is now on the floor for discussion. Since Cody Marsh made the motion, he has the right to speak first. Cody, would you like to speak now?
I promise this real quick, I've spoken enough already.
Is that a yes, you'd like to speak now?
Yes. I'm Cody Marsh, if you didn't catch that. I, I would like to say, again, I don't want to belittle any points to this, but we as a select board would welcome anybody to join any budget discussions at our meetings. The finance committee would love to hear from you. All those meetings are open to the public, and public input is very welcome. At least in my opinion, it is. I would love to see more participation in the fall and the early winter months. Always welcome, and there's never enough people expressing their opinions during the budget development. So, that was my only comment.
Would anyone else like to speak to the article? Introduce yourself, please.
Jeff Coslet. First time today. So, to Sarah Laurie's point, something I didn't click on until we got a little further into the conversation about the last article. As an example of having that kind of a joint or a hybrid type of a model, Morris Town has done that. Last year, they voted to change town meeting to Australian ballot. I believe this winter, they did have a pie-for-breakfast type event in which it was a combination meeting of social time and also informational time and input particularly into budget development. So it is a possible model. I think the article in the News and Citizen, when they spoke of the meeting in January of this year, was they had 50 or 60 individuals that participated in that process, so.
Would anyone else like to address the article? Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. You could stand up, Judy, and use the mic. State your name.
Judy Walls. And I kind of, apologies to all these folks with all their work asking this question, but I wonder if anybody else has wondered, when, when you finally get your hands on this, do you feel like you have enough time to look at it and have a good question prior to meeting, and would that be harder to do? You know, is there any way, in other words, we could get an idea of what you're thinking to do that participation at the meeting, at the meetings prior to this? Do we need to get our hands on this sooner than we do, and is that possible?
Jeff?
Jeff Coslet.
Name, please, again.
I'm learning. So to answer your question, the budget development does go right up to the end of January. That, it's just the normal course of events because some of the information we're still pulling together after the close of the previous fiscal year. And then, from that point, the ability to get that information along with all of the other information that you have in your town reports, put together, submitted to the printers so that they can do their work, get it prepared, get it back, and then get it mailed out. The turnaround time is about as quickly done as can be possible. That said, there are alternatives. Instead of having a printed town report, it can be an electronic report. That is something that would have to be voted on at a town meeting to change from a paper to an electronic. That would speed up the delivery of getting it into people's hands. You know, some people are very tactile, I'm like that. Some are very comfortable with electronic. You can do both, but you would get the electronic into people's hands more quickly, but not the paper.
Sarah Laurie?
Thank you, Sarah Laurie. I just want to make a quick clarification. My suggestion was not that we just have an informational meeting ahead of time, but that at that meeting, there is actually the power to make amendments. I think that if that were the case, I think more people would come than if they were just coming to get information and it was a one-way street. If they were able to make amendments like we can do on the floor, then I think there would be more participation. And I think it would have an actual possibility of changing things. Thanks.
Jeff Coslet, I'll clarify my comments. The event in Morrisville was exactly that. Not, if I said only informational meeting, I misspoke, they were able to provide input.
Sam?
So a couple of things, a little quick history of our own here. I was on the board, Jeff was on the board, when you all voted in town meeting to move the school budget to Australian ballot. And I must tell you that we had some very good discussions as your school board at that time of the importance of town meeting and the importance of still wanting to have citizen participation. Now, Jerry and others, I truly appreciate that town meeting with what it gives the responsibility to do. It's almost like a citizen legislator. However, we're not talking about a budget of 30 or 40 years ago. You voted already today on over a $5 million budget, and you're going, you've already voted on your school budgets and you see those numbers. Now, we're already down to about 128 people. And that's a very small percentage of registered voters. So personally, I voted okay. You know, if you want to do the voice vote on, on the officers, that's one thing, which we did, from the floor. But now we're getting into big bucks. And now we're really getting into impacting people's tax rates and alike. And again, I come back to that inclusionary piece. And to Sarah's point and to Jeff's point, and I think you were saying it as well, Courtney. You know, Duxbury, they have the community meal. And then I believe what they also do is they adjourn, and town departments are there. Not, so you're just sitting there in a hard chair, but you can go to your town department and discuss what's going on. But to some other people's point, and look in the back of your town report, you can be an active member, particularly when it comes to how your dollars are spent. Every other Tuesday, you can be, refund your select board to air any concern, and certainly during the midnight oil when they're developing the budget. Or you can join up with Larry and the gang and the finance committee. They're very inclusive and they're very open. And then make a very informed decision through an Australian ballot. So I thank you.
George?
If I could speak a little more to the example of Morris Town and Duxbury, I believe that those are really informational meetings where citizens are encouraged to make suggestions, but they do not have binding power. I think it is possible, if the legislature changed the rules to do what Sarah Laurie is describing, I believe it's done in some towns in New Hampshire, where you have two meetings or a meeting and a vote separated by some period of time, maybe a couple of weeks, where the citizens do have the authority to make binding amendments in the first meeting, and then you have a little time to print up the ballots, and then you have an Australian ballot vote a couple of weeks later. Can't do that presently in Vermont, that would take a change in the legislature. Lucy Boyden is on the committee in the House that would deal with such a, such an issue. But given the rules that we have in Vermont now, you all on this floor have a power currently, when issues are decided from the floor, that you do not have at the Australian ballot box. You have the power to make amendments. You have, you have powers to do other things under Robert's Rules of Order, as long as the moderator lets you get away with it. I think Morris Town in particular is instructive. A year ago, the legislature, at the last minute, as Cody has talked about, gave all towns in Vermont the option to have Australian ballot votes a third year in a row. Of the 10 towns in Lamoyle County, Morris Town was the only town that opted to do that, to take that option. Every other town in Lamoyle County went back to a floor meeting. What happened in Morris Town? They had to vote on their budget three times. Each time, they voted by Australian ballot, and the third time it passed. It could have been the case, if they had met the first time in town meeting, that they could have made amendments from the floor until they were happy with it and passed it on the first time. When voters vote to move to Australian ballot, you give up power. And you're, and you're doing it yourself. I think it's even more important to vote this article down than the previous article. Thank you.
Martha?
I just have a question regarding some of the things we voted on already today. We voted on a budget and we voted on two other monetary items. Are they considered the PTA and, I believe, the, what we pay our select board members? Are those two items, is their money considered under budget, or are they considered under other items?
I don't know if it's awkward for a spouse to respond. Jeff Coslet? Yes, any money that is appropriated is a budget article. So the PTA, the select board stipend, anything of that nature is a budget article.
Sally?
Thank you, Sally May. And my follow-up that I wanted to ask before, it fits all of these, but does the state allow, since this is all state mandated, would it allow for there to be a special election if the rules are followed? And how to get that special, special election? To have the vote to do Australian ballot, by Australian ballot?
Cody Marsh? So my understanding is that a special meeting, a special town meeting, other than the annual meeting, has to follow the same rules as for your annual town meeting. So if, if we vote, however we vote here, those types of questions would apply to any special town meeting moving forward. So if, for example, if Article 10, which governs just regular non-budgetary, any questions, if that is voted yes in favor for, though we would move any non-budget questions via Australian ballot, any special town meeting moving forward with a non-budget question would have to be by Australian ballot.
No, my question is, is if there was a response from the town through petition or however you have to do it to have a special election, could there be a special election by Australian ballot for these questions?
It has, the, the, the format of town meeting, whether it's special or the annual, has to follow the way that we all decide at the annual meeting. We, we could hold a special in-person town meeting, assuming we stay with in-person town meeting rules. We could hold a special in-person town meeting at any time throughout the year and re-vote on these particular questions. So those, any, and whether that's Australian ballot questions or any other questions, can be petitioned by voters to hold a special town meeting to ask any other questions.
Okay, thank you.
A petition would be, had to be 5% of the registered voters in that town to petition for a special meeting.
But would that, would that special meeting allow it to be also Australian ballot vote on the issue that you're having the meeting for as well? So it's both in-person and Australian ballot, or one or the other?
So again, regardless of how the special meeting comes about, it has to follow the same format as we all decide today. So there would be no difference between the two formats.
Kelsey Schweitzer. Hi. I am in favor of the Australian ballot. I work a full-time job, and I was lucky that I was able to take time off today to be here. It's time I will have to make up on the weekend, but I was lucky that I got to be here. I'm also lucky that I don't have to pay for childcare yet, but maybe someday I'll be lucky enough to get to pay for childcare to have to be somewhere like here. However, you shouldn't have to be lucky to be able to participate in democracy in the United States or in Vermont. I think that Mr. Putnam had a good point about ceding power. However, I think it's important that you think about who you're ceding power to. We are the lucky 128 people that were able to stay here for an entire day. And I'll point out that people have been coming, going throughout this entire time to come and do vote on the things that they were able to vote on paper for. Those are people who could have expressed their opinions on these measures if they had been able to give up their time to be here. I'll also point out that 128 I'll also point out that 198 people voted in the Tla Hall v. Rick Fletcher election, and only 128 people were able to vote on the Australian ballot. Maybe these people didn't care enough to stay for the entire time, but this is also a significant amount of time that a lot of people who are not lucky like we are, are unable to give up. So I would urge you all to consider who you're voting for. It's not for you, it's for the community, to be able to have their voices heard. Thanks.
Yes, sir. Yes.
My name is, my name is Mike Olett. There's a lot of good discussion going on here. One thing I want to just say is, I think we should be very, very careful about how we go about this. There's a lot of great ideas about a hybrid methodology, you know, having two meetings. I like what's being said there, because with that, I don't have to give up the power that I have sitting in that chair today. It also allows votes to be looked at across the community. But we don't have that in front of us right now. What we have right in front of us right now is, we, all or nothing, and I'm not willing to give that up. But let's go forward and see if we can make that happen, and bring it to this meeting next year and vote on it. We don't have that in front of us to vote on today. Thank you.
Anyone else want to address the topic? Rick?
Like to call the question, please.
Okay, state your name, please.
My name is Rick Fletcher.
Thank you. All right, a motion has been made to call the question. Is there a second? It's...
Charles Gia, second.
So a motion to call the question does require a second, does not involve discussion, cannot be amended, and it requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If you are in favor of having the discussion on Article 9 and now, then you should vote in favor of the motion to call the question. If you want discussion, or the opportunity at least for discussion to continue, then you should vote no on this motion to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion now, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? All right, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes clearly do have it. So that means there will be no more discussion on Article 9, and we will move to the vote. The, Jane? So there's been, I'll treat that as a request for a paper ballot. Paper ballot request takes 25 people in order for it to be effective. Would those who would like a paper ballot, again, please raise your hands. All right, I'm pretty sure there are 25 hands there. So we will proceed by paper ballot. This time, we will be using ballot number three. I repeat, this time use ballot number three. If you are in favor of having the town of Cambridge adopt all budget items by Australian ballot, then you should vote yea, or yes. If you are opposed to having the town of Cambridge adopt all budget articles by Australian ballot, then you should vote no.
Arms for the floor.
Is Nancy Lepsik, and Nancy, can you come up? Nancy Lepsik has asked to address you while the ballots are being counted regarding Cambridge Recreation Newsletter and Senior Survey.
Hi, I'm Nancy Lepsik from the Cambridge Rec Board, and I really don't like speaking in public. But we are doing two things right now with the Rec Board. The first is, if you don't like going through Facebook and all kinds of things to try to find out what's going on, there is a paper in the front lobby that you can scan into your phone, and you can give your email address, and we have a recreation newsletter, so it will tell you specifically what is happening right now, or in the soon future, and you can participate without having to sort through lots of papers. The second is that we're trying to enhance the services for persons 55 and over, and there is a senior survey that is available through next Friday. And again, there is a flyer in the front lobby with a QR code that you can scan on your phone, and you can take that survey to tell us what types of programs you think would help our community to better serve those persons. If for some reason you can't access it, you don't have a phone, you don't have a QR reader, whatever, the Varnum Library has agreed to help you complete that survey. And again, if for any reason you can't get it any other way, feel free to contact anybody at the town offices, and you can get hold of somebody from the Rec Board. Thank you.
It's going to, to help against passing, you know, ED, we don't want, we don't want towns to overlook, because the flip side is when you have a trail. You know, they're breaking state statute, we have state statute, what's allowed? Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, they're all trying to keep changing the statute so they can make them all road-able, like that's a dangerous thing, because in Vermont, they also say, you drive the tolls, not on the road. Right. But when they open the roads, they also, they call us, they go, how come you haven't sent us along? The deal is it to be a trail. You choose as a town to open it, that's your dollar, that's your heading. If you make it a trail, like Newport made, was smart, they made a halt, all Newport roads are trail for us, we found a trail, and we have to provide, but I just, I knew that was coming up, and I was like, I might as well do Tuesday. I don't anticipate it this year, but I'm assuming that. Right, and like, I mean, I've been testifying a lot in this session and stuff, but like, at any point, there's a fact finding, like, I can even bring my trails guy in, he and I are the two that go to the select board, it's all in this case, so. Having a local guy out, I'll keep it clean.
Well, actually, I figured at some point it might come our way, but...
Well, especially now that Waterville's talking about it again, because they have it, then Morrisville has a Jeep association. Off-road, when they're all like, well, how come you're not helping, because they're not, like, we don't allow that. You have to be statute. Some of their class fours got okay, but that was like, the town, like, said, if it's like an unused class four, which, I don't know how you define that, because class four is class four.
No, if you look at the, if you look at the maps, they say class four, then you forget off-road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Right, right, yeah. West Farm, yeah. Well, and then, yeah, we ran into the issue too with roads that closed for weather. We had a shortened couple of our riding seasons, once or both. Yeah, right, exactly, yeah. All right, yeah, so if you need it, you know, photograph me. Yeah.
Hey, of course, I didn't get to ask her in the discussion. What is the Spalding buyout?
Um, I spoke about the houses that were affected by the flooding, they're part of the buyout. So Cecil Spalding is a landowner, they're going out 15, 16, get the wrong way, or his house on the right-hand side.
Property, yeah.
So basically, what's happening is, if you buy or buy out, that's management, that was a state funding. So basically, we've got $360,000 down, it's a property, 2024, we have $360,000 in expense to buy the property, so it's money in, money out, zero effect on the budget. But we reflect a little budget just to show it's going in, so zero...
The town is not really buying out property?
Well, we own it. So basically, we're...
Okay, thank you.
Let me write it down. We have a result of the vote on Article 9. There are 134 votes cast. There were 47 yes votes and 87 no votes. So you have rejected Article 9. We will now move on to Article 10. Article 10 states, "Shall the town of Cambridge vote on all public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA 2680 subsection D?" Would someone please move the article?
I'll make that motion, Cody Marsh.
Thank you, Cody. Is there a second?
Charles Gia, second.
Article 10 has been moved and seconded. The motion seeks to adopt Article 10, whether the town of Cambridge shall vote on all public questions by Australian ballot. The motion is now on the floor for discussion, and since Cody Marsh made the motion, he has the right to speak first. Cody, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes.
Please proceed.
I'm Cody Marsh. So just to reiterate again, as I guess has been said a few times, but this is basically all non-budgetary questions, and also is not related to the election of town officials. So any other non-budgetary questions?
Who else would like to speak to the article? Jerry Marsh, Jerry Cole has indicated that he would like to speak to the article.
Jerry Cole. So as not to further embarrass you, I was going to call for, not to consider the question at all, but I didn't, I didn't go there, because it creates a lot of work. I think I would like to just call the question, because I think it'll be just as divisive and just as certain as the other three, which will have the same information, but that's just my thought, so I would like to call the question.
Is there a second?
Charles Gia, second.
All right, there's been a motion to call the question. Movements to call the question are not subject to debate or amendment, and they require a two-thirds vote in order to pass. If you approve calling the question, the motion to call the question, then there will be basically no discussion on Article 10. If you want there to be discussion on Article 10, then you should vote against the motion. If you feel you have enough information and are ready to proceed to a vote, final vote on the article itself, then you should... Did I say that right? So if you want discussion to end, then you should vote yes. If you want discussion to continue on Article 10, then you should vote no. So all those in favor of calling the question and ending discussion on Article 10, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No!
All right. It appears that the ayes have it. The ayes do have it. Therefore, you have ended discussion on Article 10, and we can proceed to vote on Article 10 as it appears in the warning. That is, I'll repeat it again, "Shall the Town of Cambridge vote on all public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA 2680 subsection D?" Is there a request to vote on this by paper ballot? Are there 25 people that are interested in doing that, or do you want to handle this by voice or otherwise? All right, so I'm not seeing 25 hands go up. So let's try this by voice first. All those in favor of having the Town of Cambridge vote on all public questions by Australian ballot pursuant to 17 VSA 2680 subsection D, say aye?
Aye!
Those opposed, say no?
No!
All right, the noes appear to have it. The noes do have it, so you have rejected Article 10. And we will move on to Article 11. Article 11, Discussion of Other Non-Binding Business. Article 11 is an opportunity to bring up other business that has not been warned. Any action taken under this article will not be binding because it has not been warned. Votes can be taken under other business on motions presented in order to present a sense of direction to the Select Board or our legislators, but those votes are not binding. Other business can also include opinions, comment, and acknowledgement of individuals and agencies. Does anyone have other business they would like to discuss? Jeff?
Jeff Coslett. I would like to extend a few thank yous, one a little bit lighthearted, but thank you to the tech ambassadors today for being our microphone runners. That was very helpful. And on a very different level, I would like to extend thanks and appreciation to our town administrator, Jonathan Delabreir, who is going to be moving on to a new position after this Friday. We wish him the best and we thank him for everything that he did for the Town of Cambridge.
It only took me two and a half years to figure out how to pronounce his last name.
Is there any other non-binding business that you would like to take up under Article 11? Rick?
My name is Rick Fletcher, I move from here.
Let's, let's just double check that there isn't any other business, but we'll get there. Is there any other business, non-binding business to be taken up? Okay, who, just Sam Lotto is speaking. Go to the mic. Back again, Sam Lotto.
Just for clarity purposes, because I think this is important, even if you voted no on the budget, any article that was approved today, a citizen could get a petition put together with how many signatures to have a revote? Could you clarify that for us?
I'm getting it.
Yep.
I calculated it earlier.
It's like 5%?
142. 5% of the registered voters, we have 2,823.
So you'd need a petition, and how soon would that have to be submitted?
30 days.
Thank you.
No. I didn't let... All right, Rick? Is there a second to that? Larry is seconded.
Second.
All right, does not require a vote. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for your patience and your hard work today. Remember, there's a Cambridge Town School District meeting that starts in about 10 minutes. Don't miss the, don't miss the fun.